Good morning. I'd like to call the June 28th County Board meeting to order. The first item is roll call. Roll call would indicate all commissioners are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. All right. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda. Everyone should have, up here, should have received the handout for item C6 on the consent agenda. So we'll conclude that after a while with the consent agenda. So at this point, looking for approval of the agenda unless there's additional add-ons.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Persky.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the public access forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the board today on any issues not found on the agenda may do so at this time. You're allotted three to four minutes. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and the board will not engage with the speaker at this time, but direct administration to the appropriate staff. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak at the public access forum? Please state your name and address.
Good morning. Sandy Clocker, 31617 Marigold Lane, Avon, Collegeville Township. I'm glad to see everybody here. Everybody seems so warm and inviting today. I called into Chasm tomorrow and had a conversation with a few of you, and it went very well. I didn't have a time to continue what I wanted to say as I was cut off after two minutes. I'm sorry about that. I know you probably wanted to talk about baseball, but hard questions come, and there is a concern in our area, as I had said. There are your constituents that are in our area, and it's not only in Stearns County, that are finding the elections a bit of a problem, and they don't trust the election anymore. They are talking about not voting. People have been aware of this through doing some canvassing in other counties. We are not doing that here at this time, but finding irregularities. Rig 2020 is out. 2000 mules is out, so there are some documentations coming out, and what I am asking is that we at least get some kind of a public forum. We would like to have a discussion, find out how things are run, how we can be self-assured that it's not going to be an election that is, doesn't have the integrity that we're looking for. We have some questions about the auto mark, the new Omni ballot. I'm going to kind of skip ahead from what I said yesterday because most of you heard that, but I heard a few things from you yesterday, and I would just like to make those comments. One person can voucher for 15. I know you can't talk to me now, but I have a concern about the vouchers. I hear you guys saying that people are calling in and talking to you about the vote. So I think it's important that we address and put people's concerns to rest. I've heard that Randy Schreifels, you know, you say Randy Schreifels does this and the state does that. I don't know if Randy Schreifels is your boss or the state is your boss, but I think we, the constituents, are your boss, so we would like to be heard. You know, if we can't staff the townships because of the money, we can find volunteers. And I know we can find election, you know, 50-50 volunteers if that needs to happen. Of the townships and cities that are not having in-person voting in a close this year, are, I have gotten from the staff, your election staff here, who's been very, very helpful, 23 precincts, times three, if we need a minimum of three, and that's a state, I believe that's a state statute, that's 69 people. I think I can find you 69 people if we have 187 people that volunteer for the library. You know, the canvassing, we got a little bit yesterday into the canvassing, or I heard from you, you know, the canvassing, trust the election. I want to trust the election. I do believe that people are doing their best, but that's not confirmed. And if we can get some kind of a guarantee that you will do a forensic audit after the fact, that you can, you know, go buy paper ballots, that if there's a different way that we can do it, machines, I don't think are the answer. Machines, if they are hooked to the internet, we all know they can have the cyber attack, and that's just reality. So we want to make sure that if you're using machines, they're legit machines. I don't trust the machines, and I think a lot of people do not trust the machines. Don't like the mail-in, don't like the county, you know, counting, you know, the ballots. Let's make this everybody form together to get the election of the integrity. So asking again for a public forum, a commitment from you from a forensic audit, or if you're not willing to speak about it, get an election petition going, and tell me how many people on the petition need to sign that petition to take this one step further. I appreciate your time today. Thank you for being respectful to us and for your courage to go forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yep.
Please state your name and address.
Hi. My name is Al Dolgren, and it's 8929 Crestview Drive in St. Joseph. I wanted to come today. Commissioner Persky asked me if I would come and actually present to you guys. For about the last year and a half, I've been working on a fire protection issue for the St., for the Pleasant Acres area in St. Joseph. And I put a folder in front of each of you that has some information in it, and I tried to organize it in a way that makes it pretty clear. The first, the first item in there is a fire classification note from my insurance agent. It says that the Pleasant Acres area changed from a PC5 to a PC5X. And what that means is PC5 is within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant or another approved source of water, and the key there is the other approved source of water. We had a suction point permit or suction point location on file with the state that covered us to keep us at a PC5 versus a PC5X, and that expired sometime a couple of years ago, and that changed our fire classification. So the second note in there is also from my insurance agent. It says, what happened to insurance rates on my home and then a few other homes in the area? My house went up $678.37. $555 of that was directly attributable to the PC5X rating. And then you can see a couple of other homes. He didn't list who they were, just what happened with their insurance ratings. Third one is, just says what we need in order to get that rating changed again. What we need is, we need an area hydrologist to verify that the lake has adequate water during a 50-year drought, so that they can draw off of it and fill their fire trucks. And I don't know if you're familiar with our lake. It's a 97-acre lake with a 54-foot depth, and it has the Watab River running in and out of it, so there's constant water flow through the lake. The county already, or the fire department already uses Watab Creek to draw water. When they, when they have trucks out, if they have a fire, they go to the Watab Creek and they suction right out of there. So our lake should be no problem. The next two things in there are the actual forms that we need. One, from an area hydrologist, and I want you to know that I did contact Nicole Blake Bradley, who's our area hydrologist, and she kind of punted on this one. She didn't know what needed to be done. She's never done it. She was unfamiliar with it, so she didn't want to do it. And the second one is that, the second one is, after you get the hydrologist to say that there's adequate water within the lake, the second one is the fire department, chief of the fire department, signs off saying, yep, I know that there's a lake there, and I know where we can draw water from the lake. The next one is a map of the area, just kind of showing how many residents are affected. And it's about, from our park mailings, it's about 325 residents or households that would be affected, and at five to 600, $500 to $1,000 per home, that's a lot of money, and it's every year. And, you know, all we got to do is get this fire protection rating changed. Lastly, and this is a little bit unrelated but related, it's if we want to have permanent fire protection in that area without fire hydrants, dry hydrants can be installed in the lake, and they aren't very expensive. They're good in the winter, they're good in the summer, but it's just, it goes down under the, under the ice level in the lake, and it gives the fire department a fire hydrant to draw water from at any time of the year. And I would think that even if, even if the area residents were taxed for that installation, it would be well worth it to have three or four of those in the area. So that's where I'm at. I just, we need, somehow we need someone out, out here that can help us to get this fire protection rating changed, and that, it's a million, several million-dollar thing. So it would be really good to have some, some help on that one. And I don't know if the county is a crack place or if the, yes.
Can you stick around until our first break? It's normally about an hour.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else here wishing to speak at the public access forum? Anyone else wishing to speak? One more time. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we will move on to our consent agenda items. And also, thank you, everyone, for coming today and being willing to speak at the public access forum. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. There are 18 items. Item number six, there was an anon from the attorney's office for the liquor license renewal that everyone should have got this morning. Is there any, anything, anyone wants to pull, or can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Persky?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull number eight.
Okay.
It's on page 46. That's liquor license approval for wine and malt liquor.
Okay. Any other ones? Commissioner Clark?
I was just, I wasn't sure, given what the letter from Mr. Gonzalez says.
C6?
Yeah, on C6, if it says that something about conditions.
Yeah, there, so there was a violation with trappers. Apparently, they agreed to pay the fine, and the county board has the ability, if we want to place restrictions on the renewal, we can do so. And Mike, if, I don't know if there's anything, or Randy?
Randy, yeah.
Yeah, I think the county attorney is just saying, there was a violation. They've come to an agreement. They're going to pay a fine, get some education. And the latter, I think, is saying, the board would like, you can put further restrictions.
And I guess my question just was, did anybody want to have that discussion? Otherwise, I am fine with moving the agenda.
Yeah, I guess as long as they've worked out of.
Right. That's kind of where I'm at. Okay. Then I'll move the agenda with, it sounds like you want to pull eight to talk about that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Clark. We have a second?
A second.
By Commissioner Mergan. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioner Persky, do you want to?
Sure.
Bring up number eight now?
Yeah. Yeah, that was a liquor license, and there were four places on there, but I had just a concern about, one in particular, milk and honey is on there, and over the past year, we've had a considerable number of complaints here by the neighbors, also with the Board of Adjustment. The township has also been concerned about the way they've been operating back with the original CUP, and in their minds, and in my own opinion, I don't believe they're in compliance with the CUP. So I would not support their liquor license. And the reason is, they had said that they were going to open an operation for an orchard cider processing, and then have sampling of their product out there. Originally, they did not mention any type of entertainment to the township. When they came to the planning commission, they mentioned the same thing. They said that they were going to do a winery operation, but they were going to have 12 special events. And those 12 special events were things like a blossom festival, music on the farm, and Harvest Festival, also maybe handing out pumpkins at a fundraiser. Well, after they got started, they started having music on the patio. Well, they weren't considering that an event. Well, they, we had never granted them permission for anything outside of those 12 events. So there's just been a conflict, and it's been ongoing. And in my opinion, if they wanted to change that, they should have maybe come back to the county or to the planning commission and asked to extend the number of events, rather than just assume that they could have as many events during their regular hours. So I'm going to not support their liquor license.
And I would guess, you know, that's probably related to a different subject, whereas I don't think if they've had any violations on, with their liquor, you know, I don't see any reason why we should deny it.
No. So, I mean, you can just go ahead. I just want to make that for public record. If you want to just call the question, we'll call the question and move on.
I'm going to move passage of it. It is a separate issue. If we, if we start denying liquor licenses for those who don't have any violations, we could run into some other challenges. So, understood.
So is that a motion?
Yep.
Commissioner Clark? Do we have a second? Commissioner Lenzmeyer? Is that a look of a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm just not enthusiastic about this, but we got to do something.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Any roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Mergan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Knott?
Aye.
Pass is four to one.
Okay. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, just really quick, and I suppose that you probably didn't mean to vote against the other three, but the whole together. You might want the record just to reflect that you, it was only that one.
Thank you for the correction.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, just, we, historically, this group could depend on Jeff for this role, but it backs up my theory, this vote, that a four-to-one vote is stronger than a five-to-zero vote, because it demonstrates some discussion. So we're going to miss you, Jeff.
And we'll still have discussion.
Set the all-time record on those losses?
What?
I think I've set the all-time record on those losses.
Oh, I don't know. We've had some contradictory.
I think I'm running second, at least.
Working on a replacement, huh?
Yeah.
All right. So that concludes the consent.
I'm convinced of that, you know, if I learned anything in my stretch.
Okay. Without the consent agenda items are taken care of, next we'll recess the regular meeting and open the Human Services Board meeting. Morning, Melissa.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Administrator, and there's only one regular agenda item on the Human Services Board today. It's item D1 on page 147. And myself and Janet Golagowski is going to come up here now, the Public Health Director in Stearns County. We're here to bring forward our CHIP plan, which is the Community Health Improvement Plan, which the Minnesota Department of Health mandates having the county board approval for every three years. The Community Health Improvement Plan, or people often reference it as the CHIP, is a collaborative effort between the three counties, Benton, Sherburne, Stearns, and Centra Care Health. And every three years, a comprehensive community health needs assessment is completed, and our strategic plan is developed to address the identified needs in our county. Our Public Health Division has been working tirelessly on outreach, education, and providing services to those most vulnerable families in our county. And our plan fits with the Stearns County values and mission to assure a safe, healthy, and vibrant county for all. So with that, Ms. Golagowski is going to outline just the highlights of the plan, because the actual plan is a long, hundreds of pages-long report that is required. So, anyway, with that, we'll summarize, unless you want us to read that 100 and some pages.
Well, let's see. Are we ahead or behind schedule?
I need an automatic adjustment here. I've been wearing three-inch heels today to try to adjust for the microphone. That didn't quite work. Thank you so much, Board Chair and Commissioners. Again, my name is Janet Golagowski. I am the Public Health Director, and I'm very happy to be here and not read 117 pages worth of very excellent data and research. I however get to share with you the really fun things that we get to do as a result of all that data and research. And so I'm going to step here really quickly.
You can do that.
So I am taking this away from you and using it as a very large remote. Thank you. Okay, so if you want to, there we go. Perfect. You might have moved ahead. There we go. All right. So because this is a mandated plan, the Community Health Improvement Plan, one of the things that we work on really hard is to make sure that we have guiding principles. And the four guiding principles can sometimes change over the years, because our community needs change. And so this year, we are focusing on supporting positive mental and, mental health and well-being, reducing disparities, connecting and supporting families, and improving health outcomes. So today, I would like to share with you how we actually do that, and then these four goals are what build relationships and help us create ultimately the systemic change that enhances the long-term health outcomes of our communities. So in the area of supporting positive mental health and well-being, one of the things I want to share with you is, we have a outreach van. We are colloquially calling it the Van Plan right now. This is three of our staff who will be helping support moving that outreach van into the communities. So if you... So some of the mobile outreach services that we'll be doing, again, because we know data supports this, is that we'll, that we go to Place of Hope to support immunizations. We do field visits, applications, housing, general well-being, outreach assistance. And when I say we, we partner with not only public health staff, but we're partnering with homeless outreach social workers. We're partnering with corrections. We're partnering with other community agencies to address and help folks who are homeless and struggling, including single people and families. We also provide food access and education, and we also have vaccine strike team support that will go and do those vaccines as well. And we also have vaccine strike team support that will go and do those vaccines as well. You will hear that as a consistent theme. Here's the example of a gentleman that was found lost with dementia, clearly homeless, clearly unable to find his way. And we worked with social workers, we worked with law enforcement and our connectors to help put together a plan for him. He is now in a memory care facility where he is safe and doing well. In the area of reducing disparities, the goals that we have can be seen in concrete, actual fashion when we're connecting at the community outpost. There, we're working with families, we work with whoever comes in the door. We do, we can do applications. We help get folks to eye exams. We help kids connect with dental services. We help folks who can't drive, don't know how to drive, connect with transportation. We teach them to ride buses. We teach them, if need be, how to connect with driving academies. So there's a lot of interaction with folks to get them the advantages that most of us enjoy every day. Next, we also partner with a production company here that will do some of our outreach and education in native languages such as Somali. And in other words, what we are able to do there is push lots of education into communities about mental health, about COVID-19 boosters, about myths in WIC, about vaccines, as well as summer safety. So a whole range there. Again, when we're working with Place of Hope and our folks who are on the streets, unfortunately, we often have families with no funds for replacement documents, no transportation, no ability to avail themselves of home equity, being able to find apartments. So we help folks do all of those connections to get them a non-crisis-oriented environment to live in. We work deep, we work very closely with school districts as well in these areas. In connecting and supporting families, our major program in public health is our family home visiting program. We have been growing that program post-COVID. Right now, we have, this last month, grown by 25%. As you can imagine, that means our nurses are out there in the community. They're busy working with moms and babies and developing that cognitive experience. We know that zero to five is when the brain develops the most. And that's what our nurses are out there working with, helping moms and babies and families develop a vision for themselves and for their own education and outcomes. Again, we have additional family home visiting programs. Circle of Security is a parenting support group for teen moms. We do referrals and outreaches, connecting folks with preschoolers with Head Start, connecting folks with early childhood, trying to help folks find appropriate childcare so they can work. We do car seats and training, and then again, in-home family visits, helping moms and babies bond. Here's another example of the education that we do specifically for young parents, getting them enrolled in school, making sure they stay in school. We want those graduation rates up. We want those babies supported. We want babies fed. We want moms supported. We're able to connect them with other services in addition to that, so they have what they need to be successful. Our next program is a relatively new program that we've been working with jail program staff on. So internally to the jail, there's programs for incarcerated parents. And then public health will step in with the parent and the children that are on, that are waiting for that reunification, supporting the family, bonding that family, creating opportunities so the reunification is successful. And that is, through that mutual support, we assure that happens. Improving health outcomes, currently, we've reached 3,500 moms and babies have access now to healthy food choices every single day in Stearns County. When moms and babies know that they're able to eat, when they know that they're able to feed their babies, when they know that they have that education to create that bond, we have a stronger core community overall. In addition to the WIC nutrition education, we also help moms and babies with educational and promotional materials. We assist with breastfeeding equipment and breastfeeding education. We're currently at a rate of 55%. That's one of our mandated goals as well. In the rural areas, we also do strike, vaccine strike teams right out to communities that, where the work is happening 24/7. Oftentimes, these are meat and production companies as well as our dairy farms. So this is a story of three of our nurses on a strike team and an educator who were out to do COVID vaccines for 36 workers. So we still continue to do COVID vaccines. We still continue to go out into communities and try to make access as easier and barrier-free as possible. And we continue to work on tobacco prevention. We really want, we really want to increase that no smoking and no vaping in our population, increasing access to cessation resources, reducing that secondhand exposure. And here again, is just another, healthy teeth, healthy children. Two examples of our dental services that we contract for is to assure that kids have access to really good dental services. They're able to, just like going to any dentist, they're able to pick out their own toothbrushes and their own little toys and do the tooth coloring and get the little timers to assure they're brushing long. We know that teeth affects overall health, especially with our young'uns. And so that is our plan in how our data actually plays out operationally and concretely in our communities. And so our ask today is board approval to submit our Community Health Improvement Plan for 2022 through 2025.
Thanks, Janet. Anybody have any questions for Janet? Commissioner Clark?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve that. A question, lots of great community things happening. And in spite of how challenging the last couple of years are, I know you found new ways to be partnering, whether with Centricare or some of the community groups, businesses and others. Wondering about the dental, is that being done in conjunction with the program at SCTCC or is that separate?
Actually, it's a very good question, Taryll. It's both. So we have an ongoing relationship with a dental services that are willing to take the medical assistance payment. And so we work closely with them, both at the Cop House and Fay Justicea, as well as hopefully through the Van Plan. And we've just currently started talks with SCTC to begin to do a site there as well. So their students, of course, can get some of that practice as well.
That's great. And certainly, little kids are a priority, as well as veterans and seniors there. That's obviously oral health, not actual doing fillings, et cetera. So obviously, the partners with the dentists will continue to be important. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment for Janet or Melissa?
Mr. Chair, no, Janet, thank you for the presentation. And again, you know, the cooperation, the partnerships have been, you know, tremendous and that makes it work, especially across the jurisdictions that we have. And oftentimes, we run into issues about boundaries. But it's nice to see the way people have been able to work cooperatively. And just one thing is, I understand too, is Way Park is perhaps trying to create some type of an outpost, not necessarily exactly the same, but something similar. So we certainly would encourage that process and cooperation to take place because, again, that helping hand is so important. So appreciate getting it out to other areas as well.
And I think it's amazing, too, when you, when you look at all the different programs and everything that's actually out there. I mean, that's, you know, kudos to the staff, I mean, the nursing staff and the people who have to do this on a daily basis because the need is always there and there's always new needs as well. So thank you and the staff for everything you do.
Very, very proud of our staff. They have just stepped up to the plate through lots of trials over the last few years. And you saw in their faces, they love their work. They love to be out in the community and they're so supportive. And they're going to just be very pleased to hear you say that from the board.
Commissioner Clark?
I know we could talk about this all day because there's a lot of good things in here. Building off of what Commissioner Persky just said about the three counties. I mean, we hear and see it every day, which side of the bridge is somebody on, especially with homelessness. So the work the three counties are doing here with the congregations, with the city and others is certainly important. And then I know that you talked about partnering. I know that it's really even more than that. You're coordinating, collaborating cross-departmentally. And we're seeing some really good results and cost savings because of that. So I appreciate, know that's more work, but it seems to be paying off.
Commissioner Mergen?
This is a little bit, you said the program encourages no smoking, no vaping, right? What is it, legalization of marijuana smoking and so on?
That's a really good question.
That sounds like I'm not going to get an answer.
Sounds like you're not going to get an answer. We are watching, seriously, we are watching. And when I say we, I mean Minnesota Department of Health as well as local public health staff. We are watching that legislation and to see what, where that's going to go. And I don't have an answer for you on that right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It would seem kind of ironic if you do these two and then start a new one. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
This isn't just a hot topic locally. The, this, there's states all over the country that are dealing with this and coming up with different ways of handling it. The, for example, my son lives on the Arkansas-Oklahoma border. Oklahoma, marijuana is legal, and Arkansas, it's not. But the interim action in Arkansas is wink and nod enforcement.
Kind of like fireworks.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
Ms. Golagowski, I'm guessing, given it's fair to say under risky youth behavior, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs is on there, there's still the emphasis of prevention and trying to discourage use and educating about what health impacts are, right?
Yes.
I think, Commissioner Mergen, when I was hearing you ask that question part of what I was hearing, I mean, nobody's advocating for use, right? I don't think our board would be there. Okay.
And regardless of the product, whether it's tobacco, vaping, marijuana, either way, we know smoking as a vehicle is very, very disastrous in terms of health complications. So I would add that to that. It's prevention, it's education, and people need to make their own choices based on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have a motion from Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second to approve the Community Health Improvement Plan?
A second.
Okay, a second from Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Okay, with that, we'll close the Human Services Board meeting and reconvene our regular meeting. Next up is Auditor Treasure.
Hello, I'm Randy Schiffler, Stearns County Auditor Treasure. And with me today is Laura. So Laura is our new election director. She took over for Dave. So I want to congratulate Laura on that, that job and promotion. Just a couple of points on what was talked about in the public access forum. And hopefully Sandy can stay around after, so I can talk further with her. But I think we'll address some of those items. And I think overall, in 2020, we did provide, you know, a lot of access to the political parties and the press. So they allowed them to come in, take a look at the processes, you know, do a number of tours. So, and we certainly will do that again. Anyway, so going on with the update. The election dates, absentee balloting, there we go, started last Friday. And that runs, of course, up until August 8th. July 19th is the last day to register for the primary. So that allows you to get your name on the polling place roster if you register by that date. August 2nd is when direct voting starts. So part of the absentee balloting process, that allows you to put your ballot directly into the machine. So, go ahead. There was some laws that are reverting back from 2020. For absentee balloting, you would again need a witness signature. That went away. Now that's back. And the healthcare outreach, it was, the staff there could do the assistance with the absentee voting at healthcare facilities. And now it's back to election judges need to do that. And then the absentee process time, so that's the time for the staff to process absentee balloting. That went to 14 days and now we're back to seven days. And the OmniBallot that was mentioned, so this is a federal required ballot marking device that's required in every polling place. And this helps the blind or people with disabilities mark their ballot independently. So you put in a regular ballot into there and then the person has various options on how they want to vote, but allows them to do it independently. That ballot then goes into the regular ballot counter. So again, allows them to do it independently. It replaced the auto mark that was 16 years old. We don't see a lot of use on this. You know, some polling places get no use, but anyway. These are the primary races that'll be on the ballot. Notice the school districts have a number of questions this year that will show up on the primaries. So with that, I'll turn it over to Laura to talk about absentee balloting.
All right. Hello, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Laura Lowenbach, newly promoted Elections and License Center Director. So absentee voting did start last Friday. It is available in two locations for all 46 days of the election. The West Service Center is one of the locations. They will have all ballots for Stearns County available. And then the St. Cloud City Hall has all ballots available as well. So we are not doing the voting at the Administration Building this year. We combined with City Hall. For direct voting, Melrose City will actually have all Stearns County ballots for the seven full days. And then at the other locations listed, there are Cold Springs, St. Augusta, St. Joseph, Painesville, Sartell, and Sock Center, they'll have just their ballot for seven days. To request a ballot by mail, you need to do that. Citizens usually will do that directly online at mnvotes.org. Applications for an absentee ballot can be emailed. And the mail ballot precincts were, actually, those postcards were mailed out last, or a couple of weeks ago in June. This year, instead of a drive-through off, off option for citizens, we are doing a ballot drop box. That ballot drop box is under 24-hour surveillance and there was quite a few statutes that we had to match in order to have that available for citizens. And then for anyone overseas, for uniformed officers, they will actually request their ballot through that website there. I should mention as well, City Hall location also will have Sherburne and Benton County ballots available for the city of St. Cloud and Sartell. So for a voter, if they request an absentee ballot, they request it online. And then the materials are sent according to if they're registered or not registered. From there, when the ballot is returned to us, the absentee ballot board is comprised of two members from two of the major political parties. So they have a variety of tasks that they have to do in conjunction with each other. So first of all, when the ballot comes back, they have to match the information on the application to the signature envelope. If there's something missing from that signature envelope, sometimes the ballot is rejected. And then the voter is notified of that rejected ballot by the ballot board. All ballots are stored and secured until seven days before the election, in which that's the new, last year it was, or in 2020 it was 14 days. Like Randy said, that went back to seven days in order for us to process those. We are going back to some in-person training for our required judges and clerks in our precincts. We do prefer the in-person training because we get to put some names to faces. The in-person election training that we have is the head judge, clerk, OmniBallot, equipment, and e-poll labs. And then online training is also available for some different functions of the elections, such as the election judge, the healthcare facility, the public accuracy test, and the e-poll books. e-poll books. Security measures. So we know security is our top foremost concern, and, you know, we are doing everything we can in our power to make sure that our elections are secure. The first thing that we do is every ballot machine is actually tested publicly, so people can come and witness that. It's done at both the county and the precinct level. All of our logins are multi-factor, so there's two-step process to get into the systems. At the end of the day, when we're closing our polls, we have to match the signatures that come in with the ballots. That number has to always be consistent and matched. There's always two election judges comprised of the two major political parties. If any ballot is handled, that's handled by the two parties. And then we also audit randomly selected precincts that are counted by hand. This year, the races that will be audited are the governor, the U.S. Senate, and U.S. Rep. For Sterns County, we have some additional security measures that we put in place. We met with Sheriff's Office just on election security around the buildings. We also have limited access to any election room at the service center. We contacted our local police so that if there are problems in the local polling places, that they're aware of them on those days. And then the Secretary of State actually came to Sterns County and did a cybersecurity review to make sure our systems were secure. There are several resources that our citizens can use. First of all, that postal verification card was mailed out right after redistricting was completed this year. So that notified them of their new polling place. Secretary of State website is sort of our bible that we always refer to. They have all the information on election laws, you know, what a judge can and can't do. It's a really great resource for our community. mnvotes.org, and then also the Sterns County website.
Just a couple other things that was mentioned. Sandy mentioned that there's some dissatisfaction or some concerns about voting that might reduce voter turnout, and we certainly don't want that. So I know we will be going on doing some radio shows and any sort of information we can provide to help people be assured that things are safe and secure. You know, the mail balloting is a choice that the local township or city makes. It's only available for ones that are less than 500 registered voters. So in Sterns County, some of them are less than 50, all the way up to 500. And I think they're looking at the cost situation of having a, you know, it does require four election judges all day to sit there, and that is their choice. And, you know, if the township or city wants to revert back, they have that option. So that is their choice to make, I guess. So with that, before we get to the action, is there any questions?
Just one quick question. I might have misheard you, the three races that will be, I thought I heard you say U.S. Senate, and we don't have a U.S. Senate race this year?
Oh, sorry.
So did you mean the state? State Senate?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify for anybody listening.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's always the federal races and then the top state races too. So, and the post-election review picks three precincts, and that's done by the canvassing board randomly. And if there's a variation more than a half of percent, then you have to expand the number of precincts you do. And in the state of Minnesota for 2020, they did not have to expand at all. And I know since I've been here, certainly the machines are way more accurate than hand counts. With also, besides the post-election review, we're always doing recounts, right? And the only change we'll ever see is if the person marking the ballot does something funky, like circle it or something else. If they're marking, though, all the machines are 100% accurate, so.
Commissioner Persky?
Yep. Just a couple of questions, Randy. When you're using the term absentee ballot, does that include early voting? So when you use the term early voting, you can actually come in and fill out a ballot and then leave it there, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. So other states use early voting. Minnesota kind of went to no-fault absentee balloting, and it's really the same as early voting, except, you know, there's a little bit more forms and stuff we have to do. So we kind of kept absentee balloting with all the administrative stuff, but people are calling it early voting. And certainly administratively, there could be some changes to help that, but yeah, it's really the same.
Okay, so a person just can come in and do their voting?
Yep.
And then leave their ballot at the desk?
Yep. So Laura mentioned the in-person locations, and then you can always do it by mail too.
Okay.
Yep.
And then also, you mentioned about having judges and witnesses at the precincts, at the voting areas. Have we had any complaints at all by those judges at all that you can recall?
Not much. You know, on Election Day, there's always concerns and calls. And if there is issues, we're working to resolve those. So I would say there is onesie-twosies issues out there at times.
Yeah, I know sometimes you walk in with a T-shirt with a candidate's name or
Yeah.
something like that, or they have a piece of pamphlet or something, and of course, they don't know that that's prohibited.
Right, yeah. So people come in with good intentions, and they don't know all the rules, right? And so they have to be corrected at times, yep. And then I guess just one other thing on the election judges and helpers. So this year, like all other years, we pick off the party list first, and so do all the precincts. So there was a good list this year, and I think almost all of our election helpers came off the party list. So, you know, there'll be two judges from different, the major parties that'll be helping out, so.
Commissioner Clark?
And I wasn't sure if you were counting this in there. I know that you work really hard on training for this. I know I get contacted every year on Election Day, a handful of cases about an election judge or somebody who's observing who maybe unintentionally is steering people towards candidates. I know you work really hard that they cannot do that. And then also about whether to turn over the ballot or not, which is important for, like, school board races or judges or whatever, like, not mentioning that. Or if you want to vote for raising your taxes, you can vote. So being as neutral as possible.
Yeah, so that's part of the training.
Can you talk just a little bit about that?
Yeah, so part of the training for the election judges and the head judges and the clerks is being neutral, right? Not nonpartisan. The instruction for the ballot judge when they hand out a ballot is to turn over to make sure they understand there's two sides of the ballot. And then, of course, it's up to the voter to decide what he wants to vote on or not. Yeah, we do a lot of training on voter assistance and what's allowed and not allowed, but it can get to be a very sticky situation, so.
Thank you for mentioning that, too. That's the other one we get called on sometimes. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, did you have something?
Yeah, the election security has come up in my walkarounds, and the, first of all, I actually did a little bit of homework on this. Doesn't make me an expert, but it's not a new topic either. This was a topic in colonial times, rigged elections. And understand, back then, the cohort of eligible voters was much narrower than it is now. You know, for example, women didn't vote back in those times. But even though with a more limited group of folks, it still was an issue. In our effort, though, big picture, in our effort to make voting more accessible and easier, we also created more opportunities for cheating. And I don't have any clue on the best way to combat this, but if we treat it as a serious issue, hopefully we can get a better handle on this. In our effort to make it more accessible, we've also made it more complicated. And so if people have a hard time understanding the details and what we're talking about in our well-intentioned efforts, we create more distrust. And I don't have a good grip on ways to move forward on this, but this issue won't go away. People are understandably concerned. This ought to be a process that folks can rely on. Maybe should we, between now and, well, even post-election, should we get a weekly update from Randy's group on this, or at least every other meeting? Because, yeah, this is gaining traction in the coffee shops. Why bother? And if it grows much more, in my opinion, we're screwed. How's that?
We certainly can dive into more of the details of the process, and we can take this opportunity, right, every couple meetings or something, do that if you like. You know, it's what you want to hear and what you want to spend time on, I guess. We can talk about it all afternoon. So I guess the other thing I just want to mention is, you know, we train close to 1,000 election judges. So these are your neighbors and your friends that are running the election. You know, it's a very decentralized system. So, you know, I think if there's issues, you know, we're going to hear about them and we're going to deal with them, so, yep.
Okay.
And then, so the action needed is to appoint two members to the canvassing board. And it can be anybody that's not on the ballot, which rules out Commissioner Lenzmeyer, so.
I can't make the motion.
Commissioner Clark? You can make the motion, you just can't serve.
So Commissioner Clark, you indicated you'd be interested in doing it again. I was, I won't be around that day, so I was wondering if.
I'm going to be gone too that day.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, I've never done it, so I would actually be interested in doing it.
That's quite interesting.
Okay, all right.
So it looks at, do we need a motion to appoint Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Persky? Can we get a motion, maybe Commissioner Mergen?
I'll move that.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Mergen to appoint Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Persky to the canvassing board. Do we have a second? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I can second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck, Laura, with your first go-around.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah, if we have to, we'll buy you a helmet.
I don't mean to interrupt. Thank you for being here. I just, my sister-in-law, on Sunday, we were driving, and I said I was coming today. And she said she received four, she's elderly, she received four ballots for the 2022 election.
Okay, thank you. But we should have your name and address.
I just want to respond to that one because it's not correct. You never received four ballots. You probably received, probably received four applications, okay? Because the county will send out applications, but the parties will also, and we can't control that. So you'll get multiple applications, but you will never get four ballots, so.
Okay. And I would say you can talk to Randy after, we'll take a break here shortly.
And we've had those complaints and investigated them, and they are not true.
Okay. Thanks, Randy. Next up is Administration. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me see if I can get our favorite map. The topic is for the board to consider approving the finance plan for our broadband project and authorize applications through the state's border-to-border program. I don't know why that doesn't want to come up.
I think it's probably an issue with your extension and settings. I think that is your screen.
I think it is too, but.
I think is there, probably have your extension set up in the settings? I was having one up the bar right in the trash.
I was having troubles with that earlier.
Should we, should we take a break? To give you, okay.
Sounds good to me.
We'll take a five-minute break at this point. As soon, well, we'll give Janet a second to get back and disconnect us, so.
We're going to take a break at 10:00 anyway.
Okay. Drum roll, please, fool. All right. I'd like to call the-
Well, we're trying. We're not going to be perfect.
I'd like to call the county board meeting back to order. Next, next item is administration. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Technical difficulties.
Oh, that's all right. We got our break in, so-
Yeah. The action requested of the board here is to authorize, authorize us to enter into, or to make applications for border-to-border funds in partnership with a couple of IS internet service providers. And, you know, I've updated you regularly on this. And I've shown you the financial plan in your packet. I'll review that just a little bit in a minute. And I think we have this fairly well nailed down for what the dollar amounts will be. Although we have two townships that are still, haven't taken action on whether they're going to participate or not. And so the numbers could change a little bit because of those. And, and then we have a township that, that one of the providers is insistent that they really need to cover it. And so we want to do something a little different there. So you can see the map here. And the proposals we're talking about are the Albany Phase One here and then the Arvig proposal here. And the two townships are, here is, I can't read that from here, but it's St. Martin. And then, and Collegeville here, here. And the numbers that you see in the table here exclude St. Martin, but include Collegeville. So that's hopefully not too confusing. The Albany Phase One, we are, we are prepared and to have numbers there for you. And then the only place that we would have, could have a little bit of difference is in, because of those two townships in that, in that Arvig South. So we have great participation, really, from, from our townships. And so that not only is raising, you know, in this first phase, over half a million dollars, and in the second phase, about $400,000. It also gives us more points in the border-to-border applications when we have local governments participating. So it's important, not only to help us with the dollars and cents, but it'll help us with our border-to-border applications. And the finance, finances here is, you can see what the total cost is, how many, how many premises are being covered, what the total cost is, and then the necessary subsidy. And then we show the township contribution. And you can see here with the, with the Arvig South and the Northwest and with the Albany Northeast, we'll be asking for border-to-border grants in the neighborhood of $6.6 million and, and county cost of just over $10 million. And then you can see the percentages here, which are important because we get the maximum points on the border-to-border application if we can keep the state's portion at, at 30% or under. And we've done this well. The other prob, the other issue is the maximum, the maximum amount is $5 million. So, so that, that comprises Phase One, which is really what, what I'm asking for approval to move ahead with being able to sign the resolutions and affidavits to, to apply with, with these two providers. The Munson Township one, the provider was just, just doesn't have a good way to, you know, to fly over that or go around it. And so what, what they proposed was a $250 or $350 drop fee so that, so that if a resident wants to hook up, they would pay that fee and it would go back into the program. Of course, we, we did all our calculations based on $350 per premise from the township. So I'm suggesting that that needs to be a little higher than that and suggesting $500, $500 per drop. And I'm certain, certain the provider will, will live with that. St. Martin, they're going to meet on Thursday. My hunch is they're not going to be there. I mean, Commissioner Notch and I were at their last meeting. But, but that could change in Collegeville. Also, I'm more concerned with Collegeville because of the, I should have shown you on the map, because of the, the Albany piece has, they have a part right here. And actually, this looks like a lot of geography, but there's actually not very much cost there for Arvig because they already have a lot of infrastructure in there. So if, if Collegeville chooses not to participate, our, the county's portion of that northeast section will go down, probably $250,000, $260,000, something like that, just depending on how the percentages all come out. But they will be considering, I believe, on Thursday. So we'll know both of those results. We should know them Friday morning. So with those caveats and giving me the ability to change this a little bit because of some moving parts. But we really need to move ahead with the providers and get these applications going. They need to, they have, they have requirements of them to send out letters to other providers to make sure those other providers aren't planning on coming into that area. They have engineering to do. So we need to, we need to move forward as best we can. So that's with the, the change or the oddity in Munson with the drop fee, some potential changes because of Collegeville and St. Martin Township's participation or not participation. I would ask the authorization to move ahead with this. The second piece, of course, we should be concerned about Phase Two here, too. And that, you can see, includes another, another section of the Northeast, which fills that area out. And that's estimated to be about a $10 million project. And then the far Northwest is estimated to be over $6 million. And then really a rough estimate for that Southwest is $6 million. And then you can see, we'll, because of the very rural nature of those areas, we're going to be subsidizing those somewhat more and asking the state to subsidize up to, up to as much as 47% and 50%. And I think that's okay. The state is recognizing in their program that we're, we're beginning to hit these more and more rural areas. And, and their program is recognizing that and upping their percentage that they can approve to. I believe it went up to 75% for another future round. So I can answer any questions if you have them.
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Persky?
Just real quick, Mike? Thanks for all your work on that. I know it's been a marathon for you. And just looking back to the legislature, you know, there's pending legislation on, on the tax bill on transportation. Did we get all the legislation completed on broadband?
The broadband was adopted, yes.
Okay, so we're not going to be short on funds or needing to ask anymore for that.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm going lately.
The border-to-border was funded, yes. And, and some other things were funded, too. And, and there's, I don't know that I would call it adequate, but there's more funding today than there ever has been in the border-to-border program.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? Otherwise, the action would be to approve the plan Mr. Williams has laid out in front of us.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion?
Okay, we have a motion from Lee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Mergan. All right, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Mike, for all your work. And hopefully we have some good news this week yet.
Yeah.
Next up, we have Parks with Ben Anderson.
Morning, Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Parks Director. A quick note before we get into the discussion today. The Park Commission and the Parks Department will also be requesting a submittal of a different grant for Quarry Park. But that won't become before the board until the July 19th meeting. So just want to make you aware that there are, we are asking for your consideration on two different grant submittals for, for this year going into the same program, which is the Parks and Trails Legacy Grant Program. So today, for your consideration, it's item G1. Can be found on packet pages 153 through 161. And it's the consideration to adopt a resolution supporting Parks and Trails Legacy Funding Application for Phase One Development of Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park. Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park is a 265-acre park that is located just west of the city of St. Joseph along County Road 51. Currently, the park consists of one gravel parking lot, hiking trails, and the county has partnered with the Carlson family to operate and manage the current maple syrup operation and their public tours out there. Previous action taken on the Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park include the county purchased the property in 2007. The Stearns County Board of Commissioners adopted the Kramer Lake Wildwood Master Plan in 2016. In the, in November of last year, the county board adopted the 2022 through 2026 Capital Improvement Plan, which identified Kramer Lake Wildwood, the Phase One Development, through the CIP. And that's where we're going to propose that the matching funds for the grant would come through, would be the bonding dollars there. Also, the development of Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park was identified in the 2040 Comp Plan that was just recently completed. And the Kramer Lake, the development of the park was identified as a top priority in the County Parks Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, which is adopted in this past April. Through a robust public engagement process, the Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park Master Plan was completed and adopted. And as identified in the Kramer Lake Wildwood Master Plan, different amenities were pulled from the three identified phases in the master plan to create an updated 2022 Phase One Development Plan. As you'll see on the map that's displayed on the screen, the updated Phase One Development Plan includes enhanced entry to the park using Kipper Road, a parking lot, and turnaround picnic areas, picnic shelters, a pit-style restroom, fishing pier, nature-based playground, non-motorized boat launch, and paved trail access to the lake and other select amenities. The Park Department and the Park Commission determined that these identified amenities reflect the community's needs and desires and are the easiest to develop at this time and provide the most benefit to a variety of users. The Stearns County Parks Commission, at their 2000, at their June 8th meeting, reviewed and recommends that the county board submit a grant application for the legacy funds with a 25% county match for the development of the park. The match, like I said, is proposed to come from the county bond dollars. If you want to turn to packet page 155, that's the supplemental board information. So the overall budget can be seen on packet page 158. And we're looking at about a one and a half million to 1.6 million. And we're looking at about $1.5 million to $1.6 million over dollar, overall project cost for this. If the County Board chooses that they would like to submit the full match of the 25%, that would be about $393,000 of that 1.5, 1.6 million. And then the grant request would be about 1.2 million. I do want to note that as our park system continues to develop, there is a need to hire additional full-time maintenance staff. Once the development is complete at this park, at least the Phase One, we will need to hire seasonals as we do at our other parks like Mississippi, Warner Lake, Quarry Park, just to assist with the garbage and maintenance and to have staff on site to be there to assist. The obligation, if and when we're funded, would just be to operate and maintain the park for no less than 20 years if we receive the funding. So with that, I can open up for questions.
So Ben, like on a park layout like this, is there like any fees similar to like Quarry Park?
No, there was, that was discussed during the master planning process, and it was not included in the master plan at that time. However, it doesn't mean it can't be re-discussed at some point. But that is not part of the proposal here.
Okay. Commissioner Mergan?
Just to clarify, bonding dollars means borrowing, right?
I believe so.
And we were going to, taxpayers are going to pay interest on that in addition to that and everything else. And I have no problem with putting the application in. I have a problem with $393,000 matching. Either the thing can stand on its own merit or it doesn't, is my, that's my opinion. The one coming up in July 19th, is there going to be another dollar amount match for that one?
Yes, there will be, and I do have other funding sources identified for that one.
My question is, where does this stuff end? Where and when does this end? You know, that match, we're always told that gives us a better chance of getting it. To me, that's extortion. So I have a real problem with that.
Commissioner Mergan, the match for this grant is actually point-based. So you get the most points for putting in a 25% match. So what that does for us is if, you know, there's two applications that are very close, but one entity decided to only put in 15% and we decided to put in 25, it gives us, you know, that edge and that hopefully we would then get that funding brought in. I do have different scenarios laid out that if the County Board is not comfortable with a 25% match, there is no match required for this. So, you know, we could look at a potential 10, 15, or 20%. However, the recommendation from park staff and the Park Commission would be to do the 25% just because it gives us the best chance of bringing that, those funds in.
And that meets my definition of extortion. Anyway, I will support it if the grant is with no match, support the application if it's no match and have it stand on its own merits.
So Ben, another question I have is, I know some of the parks, or maybe all of them, if people reserve them, there's a fee, correct? Does the same thing apply to something like this?
For the certain shelters, we could, yep, we could certainly implement that fee for the shelter rental fee.
I would think if we have it for the other ones consistently, we should either do it for all or...
Right. The only park we don't do that at right now is Quarry Park, and that's just because there's so many people coming and going, and they're located at the swim quarries. All the other ones do have a fee.
Yeah. The Quarry Park, you have, there's a gate fee or something, right?
Parking fee, yep.
Yeah. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I believe this park and this park development has been an issue since I came on the Board. I believe we had the local folks on Kramer Lake that were kind of up in arms about what we're going to do on Kramer Lake. And it was considerable, I think, oppositions of an expansion there maybe even in the park usage, if I recall.
Well, I think part of it was that access to that lake is a kind of a private access.
Correct. But nevertheless, over the number of years, you know, we've developed this plan and it's been in the works and now it looks like it's time to move it forward. What I like about the position of this opportunity is, you know, we have so much traffic and work out there at Quarry Park at this time. And the reason is, I mean, just the population center is so close to St. Cloud, and that's why it gets hammered. By all means, I believe this is going to be very similar. It's going to be very close and it's going to provide, you know, tremendous opportunity for people. So to Mr. Mergan's point, I like, I'd like to see less of a match, but, you know, I want to see this park happen and develop, and sometimes you have to swallow hard. So that being said, I guess I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion to move forward. The proposal, as Ben has it, and supported by the Park Commission.
So before I ask for a second, so Ben, just for clarification, so let's say the County Board would say, okay, let's go in with a 10% match or, you know, a different number. If then, let's say it didn't get grant-funded, how far back does that push any development on this proposed park?
Another year.
So basically, you go back and reapply in the same scenario?
Yep. So applications are due every July, the end of July of every year. So it just pushes it back a year.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Question with regard to the match. And, you know, given how many applications gets put in, I recognize the point system. They want to see skin in the game, local skin in the game, which makes us more competitive. How competitive are, can you talk a little bit about how competitive this process is? And how much of a difference point-wise do you know, does it make between doing the 25% match or something less?
Yeah, so the, there's about, from what I understand, about $12 million available for Greater Minnesota. And Greater Minnesota is the Haiti counties outside the seven-county metro area. So they're getting applications from all across the state for this. When it comes to terms, I don't know what other projects are being submitted from across the state.
I guess, I was thinking from last year or the year before.
Right, right. You know, the Commission highly encourages people who are putting in applications to put in the full 25% match because then it becomes, you know, you become more competitive because of that. There's a lot of entities that don't, that put in 15 or 20 or, you know, 25 or the 10%. So I know it's not an exact answer, and I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can give you an exact answer on that.
Maybe a kind of a follow-up on that. Do you have any idea about, and I'm sorry, I should have asked you about this before the meeting, about what kind of breakout, breakdown have they done between very rural or very small counties that don't have any resources versus some bigger ones? I mean, is that part of the point total? Like, are we competing with those who are going to get more points because they may not have other resources or?
No, everybody's on an equal playing field when it comes to this. You know, we are lucky in the fact that we do have staff that can support and write these grants where a lot of the smaller counties can't. So we do get a leg up just because we have that available. But no, the point system is the same for everybody.
Okay.
Ben, I'm assuming Quarry Park, there's a caretaker all the time. Would this be the only, the next, the only other one that has a caretaker then? Or a part-time person or?
Warner Lake also has part-time people down there, as does Mississippi. So this would be our fourth one that has seasonal caretakers assisting.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, the, on one hand, I would like to see an exploration of options besides the match situation as it was presented. But at the same time, while we never talk about it, we do have dueling jurisdictions here. And I'm referring to the state and the county. The state wants this to happen, but they want it, do it for, to make their dollars go as far as possible, which means smaller grants. The county wants to see this happen and make it possible with similar, smaller financial commitment. So in some respects, while it's never addressed, this is almost a game of financial chicken. So we'll, we should, in answer to Jeff's concerns, we should explore what the other alternatives are. And relative to action on this, is there a deadline?
Yes, so the application is due at the end of July. So the July 19th Board meeting would be the, we'd need an absolute answer by then. So one thing I would say, you know, we have been lucky in the past in that, you know, we've received some federal dollars that we've been able to use for matches for the Lake Wobegon Trail Extension and for the Beaver Island. So we've been able to play the federal versus state in the past, and the county hasn't had to necessarily throw in a lot of dollars per se to assist with those projects. But, you know, I look at this and me personally, and this is just a personal comment, I would certainly give somebody, you know, if I had $400,000, I could give somebody and I could get 1.2 million back for that. That is, I think, in my mind, that's a good investment. I understand it's a lot of money and that, and what that looks like, but I think it's a good return on the funds. I mean, this is a park that we see, currently see between 20,000 and 30,000 visitors a year, the way that it is, you know? How many more people can we bring in? We'll probably estimate closer to 50,000 to 60,000 annual visitors, you know, if we could get this developed like that.
And another element of the financial game of chicken that we're playing here is the way deadlines are set. I appreciate that other agencies have a timeline for getting things completed at the same time. I think putting those deadlines on a relatively short leash eliminates some options, but that's an old game.
You know, maybe when you look at the size of Stearns County and the size of the park system we're creating, maybe we have to look more like the state park system where you get a one-time annual permit and you can go to any of them, you know, to, I mean, that's a big investment, I mean, on the county's part over time. I mean, that'd be one way, you know, kind of say, hey, here, buy one pass and you can go anywhere. But then that requires somebody at each gate to collect the fee, so.
Yeah, no, I was kind of wondering about that, too. And it certainly, part of the question is, is what does that mean in terms of that staff cost that you were talking about? Now that we've started working with the library systems about being able to check out for those, maybe, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a high fee, but it could be a fee. You know, Lee, I appreciate your, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I appreciate your kind of analogy or metaphor with it being a game of chicken. You know, the truth is, there's limited state funds, and so it's a competitive process. We've actually known, we know every, it's every year. We might forget, but we know when it is. We knew last year when we had a conversation or when we did, we approved the master plan, and we did approve the master plan. This is high up on our master plan. So, you know, it is, one could argue that it's also seen as, you know, competitive process, us not having to have our local taxpayers put the significant dollars in to improve this. I really personally like the idea of looking at some other kinds of permits, if we could figure out how to do that without it costing us more money to do it. And I'm guessing that your motion includes trying to find other fund, I mean, if possible, leveraging other funds for match. I mean, you've done a great job with that. So I guess I'm going to go ahead and second the motion, just to have us move forward. And I just want to remind the Board, I can't be here on the 19th, so I won't be here because I'll already be at NACO.
Yeah, and I think, too, I think at some point, we should research costs, you know, expense basis or revenue versus costs of, at some point, either a permit fee or something. I mean, these are huge investments, and face it, it's not one time. It's 20 years upgrading the picnic shelter or 10 years. And, you know, it's ongoing expenses that'll occur. So if somehow we can figure out a way to offset some of those costs, I think with our park system, especially around, the bigger ones are around St. Cloud, your most populous part of the county, I think that's something to research.
Well, and that, Mr. Chair, not to make it too much more complicated, but perhaps residents, it shouldn't be having it, or it should be a lower amount, or residents in the tri-county area, if we've got an agreement. We do seem to have a fair amount of people coming up and enjoying this from other, like the cities. So it's not even necessarily the St. Cloud area, it's, which, you know, it is a significant part of our population, but maybe we look at something that's different for residents versus non- or non-area people.
Mr. Chair, I'll just add that we are currently working with procurement for the RFP for an overall county Parks and Trails Master Plan, so I can certainly add into the RFP asking the consultant to assist with exploring what that may look like.
Sure. Mr. Chair, we got a motion and a second on the floor. And so, and now we have the discussion. I'm just, I would like to see it move forward, but again, if there's hesitation on the 25% or how we're going to leverage it, I don't know if we want to delay that, or do we just want to take action on it? By all means, I would like to see something happen though this year as far as getting the application in. So any more discussion on that?
Commissioner Mergan?
Yeah, and it does say, too, we need to now hire an additional staff person. That's cost forever to the taxpayers. We're talking here, death by a thousand cuts to the taxpayers again. Little bit here, a little bit there, it's just forever.
I will say, ironically, my constituents often talk about their taxpayer dollars going for this. They consider this to be one of the benefits of the county versus some of the other things they're expending money on. I mean, Parks and Trails come up very high, and it's not in St. Cloud. They're willing to go, but they do see some benefits. So it's kind of an interesting thing.
Go ahead, Ben.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add, too, so the county parks, we haven't added a full-time position since 2001, and we've added over 650 acres to our park system since then and many miles of trail. So it's not something that's just because of this specific project, it's a need over what has been done over the last 20 years that has also accumulated into the need for an additional full-time staff as well at some point.
And I can see the season, though, people needed, you know, for these parks, but yeah, eventually you created a bigger system, eventually you have to put somebody in place. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. We have had discussion. All those in favor of adopting resolutions, support of the Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park Development, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Rule call?
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Mergan?
Nay.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Nay.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Motion passes three to, okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that was with the 25% match, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that doesn't mean that there's not, I mean, you might find other money that reduces that match, correct?
Well, we'll look at it, but the county bond, because we're committing to that match with the resolution, so.
All right. Okay, thanks, Ben. Next up, Environmental Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. We have several items in front of you. We will start with the Brockway Township plat entitled Majestic River Estates. The action we are looking for is approval of the plat and approval of park dedication. So the park dedication process Ben will go through with you. This is a four-lot plat. There are three new lots being created and one existing lot. So Ben will go through all of the park dedication. It has met all the requirements for land use and subdivision and was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Commissioner Persky was, I think, at attending all of the meetings that have subsequently been held. So if there are any additional questions related to the plat, we can answer them, but I will turn it over to Ben for the park dedication portion of this discussion.
Thank you, Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Park Director, again. So just, I want to go and take about 10 minutes to walk through the Parkland Dedication Ordinance, walk through why the Park Department and Park Commission are recommending land dedication versus the fee for this particular plat. And then, because this is something that the county has not done before, I think it's important that we walk through that. So please ask questions as we move through if there's questions that pop up. I'm here today to discuss the County Board options for the Parkland Dedication Ordinance, Ordinance Number 625, as it relates to the Majestic River ordinance number six twenty-five, as it relates to the Majestic River Estates plat you are considering today. This ordinance was drafted and adopted in accordance with Minnesota statutes, section three ninety-four point two-five subdivision seven. Section one point one of the ordinance states that the Stearns County Board of Commissioners finds that it is necessary and in the public interest to provide future parks, trails, and other public spaces for the citizens of Stearns County. The necessity for additional public spaces is caused in part by increased development occurring within the county. The Stearns County Board further finds that the financial burden of creating additional public space and recreational opportunities should not be placed entirely upon the general property tax levy. Rather, new development should contribute financially to and assist in offsetting the costs associated with creating of additional public spaces. So as new residential developments are platted in Stearns County, a dedication of land or payment in lieu of land is required from developers to assist with the development of the county's outdoor recreation system. Section four point one of the Park Dedication Ordinance reads as follows. The dedication requirement. As a condition of a plat approval and upon finding by the Stearns County Board of Commissioners that the same is fair, reasonable, and proportionate to the need created, the developer of a plat, platted residential subdivision consisting of three or more newly created residential building units shall be required to, one, either dedicate up to ten percent of the usable land, as defined in the ordinance, within the residential subdivision to the public for park purposes; two, pay up to a thousand dollars per each newly created residential building unit; or three, make a combination, a land cash dedication to the county for park purposes. And in no case shall the value of the dedication and/or fee imposed exceed ten percent of the estimated market value of the residential subdivision. So as stated in the ordinance, and if the county board chooses land dedication instead of the fee, the county board shall determine the location and configuration of any land dedication. Packet page one seventy and the map you see on the screen shows what the proposed land dedication could look like as recommended by the Park Commission and Park Staff. The following must be considered by the board and will demonstrate the need for the land dedication and not the fee. First consideration, the suitability of the land for its intended purpose and the future needs of the community with respect to parks and trails or open spaces. So Mississippi River County Park is one of the county's oldest county parks. It was acquired in nineteen seventy-three and has been serving the citizens of Stearns County and other regional visitors ever since, to name just a few of the amenities the park has to offer. Boat landing, archery range, soon-to-be archery ranges, walking trails, cross-country ski trails, picnic shelters, disc golf course, along with many other opportunities, activities as identified in the Great River Park Complex Master Plan that was approved and adopted by the county board on June second, two thousand and twenty. The intended purpose of the proposed land dedication is to create an equal distant buffer, heavily vegetated, native trees and shrubs, buffer between the residential subdivision and the regionally significant Mississippi River County Park. The need is created as the county park has archery facilities located along the property boundary and thus there are safety concerns with residential housing units proposed. Also, located along the property boundary is an open playfield, playground, and picnic shelter. The view from this area has been an unobstructed view since nineteen seventy-three and this is what park visitors know and have come to expect within the park. With the assistance of our visitor counters, we estimate that there are approximately fifty thousand park users each year that utilize Mississippi County Park. In addition, five to six thousand cars utilize the archery range alone at that facility. It's a very heavily used amenity within our system. Currently, the park area located directly adjacent to the proposed development is an area that hosts many events each year as well. This includes, but are not limited to disc golf tournaments, youth and archery events, tournaments, including the recent state archery tournament that just occurred up there, family gatherings, girl and boy scout outings, and camping. Second item that must be considered by the board when looking at the land dedication is that the amount of any fees imposed are consistent with the requirements and limitations of the ordinance. If you look at the recommended land dedication, you see in phase one plat, there are four identified plots. However, only three of the four lots are new residential lots because there is an existing home on one of the lots. Thus, the Parkland Dedication Ordinance only applies to the three new residential lots. Consistent with the requirement and limitations of the ordinance, land dedication for phase one that is in front of you today, the total dedication at ten percent would be approximately point seven eight acres. Therefore, the proposed land dedication suggested is consistent with the requirements and limitations of the County Parkland Dedication Ordinance. The third item that needs to be considered by the board is whether the land is adjacent or proximate to the public lands that are used for recreational purposes. The county has not previously utilized the land dedication portion of this ordinance, reason being, there has never been a situation that warranted such use. The land that is being developed falls directly adjacent to the existing Mississippi River County Park and areas of significant public use and thus creates a need and the opportunity for the proposed buffer. Fourth item that needs to be considered by the board, whether an opportunity is presented to extend an existing or proposed trail or park area. As this proposed residential development directly abuts Mississippi River County Park, there is the opportunity to extend an existing heavily used park area. The Stearns County Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan also identifies that to meet the current parkland per capita goals, Stearns County should add approximately four hundred and fifteen acres of parkland into our system. As the development is directly adjacent to the existing park, there is an opportunity to extend the park and assist in meeting the objective identified in the comp plan without creating an entirely new county park. Fifth objective, or fifth item that needs to be considered, whether the dedication would protect environmentally or historically sensitive sites. The dedication of land will assist with protecting the park, which contains environmentally significant and sensitive sites as identified in the Minnesota Biological Survey Native Plant Community and Rare Species Stearns County Map. This area includes floodplain forest and plants that are federally and state listed and protected. In terms of the park departments and the community's history, Mississippi River County Park is sensitive and that is one of Stearns County's first county parks and has been a community asset for over fifty years, for almost fifty years. The last item that needs to be considered by the board when taking into consideration a land dedication is whether the proposed dedication provides a unique public benefit or contains unique natural features. The proposed land dedication provides a unique public benefit in that we have an opportunity to create a vegetated buffer that benefits both the park and the residential development for the reasons identified previously and in which I will identify here in a little bit. The Stearns County Park Commission discussed at their April thirteenth and May eleventh meetings, the Park Dedication Ordinance and the options available for residential subdivisions of three or more units. The Stearns County Park Commission and the County Parks Department recommend that the county board implement option one, dedicate up to ten percent of the usable land within this residential subdivision to the public for park purposes. The Park Commission and Park Department further recommends that the county board preserve the full ten percent of the usable land as defined by the ordinance. It was further discussed and recommended that staff continue to work with the developer to come to an agreement for the future land dedication portion, which is phase two, which is not being considered today, that'll come at a later date. Potentially will come at a later date. The developer and the county staff have been discussing the buffer concept and the developer has expressed interest in working with the county on what this concept may look like. However, most of this conversation, like you said, will need to occur when and if the developer submits phase two, as this is when most of the land dedication would be acquired if the county opts to utilize the land dedication option in this ordinance. The Park Commission and the Park Department considered many variables and options when considering where to propose the location of the land dedication. Impacts to the developer were considered. For example, one discussion item included a proposed buffer along the river shoreline. However, it was recognized that the developer would be most impacted by this as it would drastically affect the most valuable lots. After much discussion, the Stearns County Park Commission and the Stearns County Park Department is recommending that the dedicated land be used to create that equal distant vegetated dense trees and shrubs buffer along the northwest edge of the park as shown in the map on the screen. This buffer expands the park boundary and better protects the park pavilion area, the existing archery range, the identified walk-through archery course, and other proposed future uses as identified in the Great River Park Complex Master Plan. The Stearns County Park Commission and the Stearns County Park Department are certain that the addition of this buffer preserves the integrity of the park, provides an improved residential neighborhood experience, improves the park visitor experience, and is safer for both park users and residential neighbors. So that's the park, the land dedication portion. I do want to walk through what the fee would look like, so you have an understanding of what the fee would look like in comparison to the land dedication. So if the county board decides to take the cash option for the phase one plat in front of you today, the county would collect three thousand dollars. And if in the future development of phase two is presented approximately, and this would depend on the number of lots that come in in phase two, but from what we've seen, it would be about an additional seventeen thousand would be added to the County Park Dedication Fund. It's our, the Park Commission and the Park Department, you know, feel that the value of the buffer to Mississippi River County Park, to the Stearns County residents and the fifty to sixty thousand annual park users is much greater than any fee that would ever be collected. So what are we asking for? Thank you for bearing with me. So what needs to be decided today is whether the county board wants to require the land dedication or fee pursuant to the county park dedication ordinance number six twenty-five for the phase one development of Majestic River Estates plat. If the board decides it wants to require the land dedication, we suggest and recommend that the board defer the actual phase one land dedication until when and if the developer submits phase two. Reason being, phase one would give us approximately point seven eight acres or a fifteen-foot buffer. Does not make sense to go through all the paperwork twice for the small of an area and then again when and if phase two is submitted. So in summary, if the board chooses to implement the land dedication option for phase one plat, the actual dedication of land for phase one would be deferred and added to when and if phase two of the plat is submitted.
So Ben, the ten percent is based on the usable, not the gross?
Correct. So if you look into the ordinance itself, there's an actual definition of what usable land is.
Because this parcel is more than forty-some acres, right?
Correct, yeah. And this is just an example, that exact acreage that's on here, that would need to be determined once phase two was submitted, because yes, under the usable land, you need to exclude outlots, wetlands, dedicated streets, utility easements, drainage easements, and so on and so forth.
Okay.
Did you say that overall it would be twenty-seven acres?
Nope, nope. Sorry if I, the dedication portion?
Yeah.
Point seven eight acres is what for the first phase would be the land dedication. Rough numbers for what we're potentially seeing for the second is about potentially three point seven four-ish, something like that. So we'd probably be looking at close to this four and a half total dedication if phase two gets submitted. And I don't want to speak anything for the developer, Mr. Leggett is here, you know, if you have questions specifically on the plat and for him.
Okay, and I know, Ben, you mentioned to me earlier, you know, that you guys have been having discussions with the developer and, you know, normally wouldn't do this, but I'd be willing, if you and the developer have been discussing compromise or work, you know, if he wants to come up and kind of state what you guys have been discussing, I guess I'd be, yeah, if Mr. Leggett wants to come up here, give a couple of minutes to just kind of.
Good morning, Board. Steve Leggett, four two oh seven six, County Road One, Rice, actually a Stearns County resident, even though it's Rice address, I actually Brockway Township resident as well. So, yeah, we appreciate this. Yeah, the big talking point, I guess, that we'll lead into is the park fee versus parkland dedication. Currently, we do have everything in place, as Shelley or Jennifer, we submitted to Jennifer, but we do have all the milars, easements, fees, everything put in place. We had, you know, initially had paid the park dedication fee as well on phase one. And again, our focus is phase one today, that is what we're talking about. However, there is a connection to phase two here that we're bringing in. Previously, you know, and again, there was some misconceptions and, but, you know, on our Plating Committee, our Planning Commission, the township has all given recommendation on the fee itself. And that was our recommendation, too. We have been working with the county on the side, kind of a quasi, it was kind of a lead-in off the Plating Committee itself, but working with environmental and Ben with the parks to try to come up with a potential compromise that would work good for all. As you may know, this is the first time in the history of Stearns County that a parkland dedication has been attempted. And that's where our frustration has really come to light on this is because we've asked multiple times for, you know, some of the calculations relative, there are state statutes or the county statutes, and you can see clearly that, you know, we just, in fact, you just mentioned, that outlots are to be excluded, things of that nature, and again, we're breaking it down. I've spoken with, you know, Stearns Legal as well, they're in agreement that the ordinance is probably very poorly or greatly written to be interpreted in different fashions. In the last meeting I had as well, there was certainly, part of what the state statutes and both your county statutes list is reasonable. The, if you decide to take the land, it should be in a reasonable amount, based not on what the, maybe the county has generated for themselves or is in need of, it's what we generate. Now, we've obviously consulted many people within the state relative to this to get a background and doing our calculations, you know, if, again, you base it on the need that we're generating, we're putting upwards of potentially twenty households in here. The average household size in Stearns County is two point five six. That means we're generating about fifty-one point two people. National standard, you know, there's national criteria out there, there's, the Stearns County is well above the national criteria for the amount of parkland per person already. It sounded like quite a bit has been added over the years, sounds like even in Ben's earlier discussion, wanting to make upgrades and need money for it. And again, we are suggesting within what we've proposed to the county is that the fees be taken, specifically on phase one. However, we have put this detailed offer on the table for us to submit upwards of four point four acres as a conservative easement grant to the county, be gifted to the county, and that's what we're working on for phase two. Our calculations come out, and again, we've had people help us on this, that it would be under one acre total, that the county would have the ability legally to take from us. It would not be the five point five, it would not be the ten percent. There has to be, again, you've got to look at the need that we're generating with the households we're putting in place. Likewise, there has to be a nexus or a proportionality of that value of the land to what the potential fee would be. Ben just spoke that it was, it's a twenty thousand dollar fee potentially, depending on how phase two comes in. So when you do those two comparisons, we come up with around a half acre to point seven acres, again, well under one acre, that the county could legally take as a park dedication. And we have no problem if that is the route. We're just asking for clarity. I've been asking for months for the county to give me those calculations on how we're generating, what need we're generating and how they're doing that math. They simply fall back to this ten percent, which is not correct. So again, if you do decide to take that route, we just want to be, I was very emphatic with the legal, Stearns County legal, that we're not in agreement with how they're doing the ten percent calculation, not just us, but our other people that have been guiding us on this. And we would ask that in phase one, we stick with the fee. We're still willing, and part of our resolution or the offer we've put to the county is that we would pay the three thousand on phase one, and we've got the offer on the table to create this buffer between our land and the park. And we're willing to, we think it'll be a nice feature. However, there's some gives and takes within that. I don't know if anybody's seen that, I've documented it to the county. But we, part of what we would do would be utilizing some of that area for our stormwater retention areas as well, so we'd be harvesting some soils out of there. So again, giving up the four point four acres, we would be getting some things in return as well. So, and there's a few other things, I won't go into the details, but, so again, at the Planning Commission, I stated that, our offer's on the table for that. We believe it's much, much more robust than if we have to get down to the nitty-gritty and do the calculations. So again, we strongly. So again, we strongly subside that the fee stay in place on Phase One, as it has been recommended by the planning commission, the township. I think there was a letter that they wrote is in strong commitment to that, and I think a lot of people's view is that there's a 200-some acre park already adjacent to this. If you guys end up with one more acre, you know, is that really going to make a big impact to it? The other thing, and Ben brought it up, he used the word "safe" and "archery range." For months, I've been talking to both the Parks Commission, I don't know if it's gotten relayed, I haven't sat before directly with the Parks Commission, but I have sat before Ben and Stearns County Legal. There are issues, I've brought them up numerous times. I said, maybe we should use the fee that we would potentially pay you to put the safety implementations into place, to safeguard this range. I don't think anybody would be happy if they had arrows flying onto their private property, and we have that. We've had arrows come onto our land after we've notified the county about this problem. So, again, it's probably a future discussion. The good news is, those arrows are not reaching anywhere near Phase One, so there's no issues with safety there. However, it's our private property. We're driving out there, this year we're putting some food plots in for deer hunting. And when people are out there shooting these arrows, we have documented arrows coming upwards of 200 yards onto our property, multiple arrows. So, and again, whether they're deflecting, people are letting loose by accident on the high flight, go to, they're traveling 400 yards from where they're shooting. So, just to give you an idea, now that's not just our safety, but if you do a radius, they could be landing on the public road, they could be landing on the neighbors to the west, they could be landing on people utilizing the park. And again, Ben mentioned as well, even after my notification, there was a recent increased archery shoot there a few weeks ago or last week, there's another one planned. We've been very gracious with notifying the county of this, yet nothing has been done. In fact, at my last meeting, about, what is it, a week and a half, two weeks ago, I asked Ben what the status update was on any safety improvements, the response was nothing. So, that's frustrating. So, again, that maybe these fees could be put, you know, to better use versus the land dedication, and again, that's where we strongly stand on this. Stick with the park fees, we would ask of that. So, any questions?
Yeah. Thanks for the clarifications, and, you know, we'll see where it goes from here.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ben, did you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Ben, do you have anything to add to your discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, we did review this extensively with the attorney's office, and the attorney office does feel that we do have a good, sound ordinance, that our calculations based off of how it is written, you know, will be held up with the state statute. As it relates to the archery discussion and the arrows, we have been looking into solutions on what that may look like. That is something that we've always known is, is a possibility and was a possibility coming in with the archery being there. The issue is, you know, not when people are, are shooting and drawing back at a parallel to the ground, there's no way an arrow can get onto private property that way. The issue comes is when they are skydrawing, and either they accidentally bump their trigger or D-loop brakes or something like that. So we are looking into solutions. The temporary fix that Mr. Leggett is not aware of at this point, for right now, is we can do immediately is put signs up that say no skydrawing. But there are other options, but they're going to cost money to do those, right? Potentially putting structures over the top, removing, moving the archery range, you know, relocating it, all those things are on the table. So it's, we're not ignoring his requests or those types of things, we are looking into them, it just, it takes some time to put that into play. There are additional shoots that are going out there, that go on out there. We do close the park down for the 3D archery shoot, in which the, in which the whole park get utilized for that. The state shoot that was shot a couple weeks ago, they had 100, I believe it was 60 participants on Saturday and 50 or 60 on Sunday. That was not directly facing this property that was put in a separate location right by the picnic shelter. So all those considers are being, considerations are being taken into account when we are allowing those activities out there. And by no means am I demeaning or not recognizing that there certainly are arrows going out there, because I'm sure there are, because accidents happen, and that's not at all an excuse, but we are looking into how we can mitigate that in the future, so.
And in the future, there'd be, if the developments, Phase Twos goes up to this property, there's a setback, I'm assuming, from the property anyway, correct? I don't know how far that is, 30 feet?
Not real far.
But there would be a setback. Okay. All right. So, any further discussion? Lee?
The opportunity that we're looking at here is totally unique. I, I haven't seen in my tenure here a development that's being attempted adjacent one of our parks. In addition, I don't remember, maybe one happened where we have the opportunity to accept a donation of a portion of a, of a development to facilitate the effort here. And one of the things that Mr. Leggett's encountering is whenever a unique proposal comes forward in virtually any aspect of the things the county's involved in, it takes a while for us to shake stuff out, which drives by private sector folks crazy. But if we're unfamiliar with it, it takes a certain degree of education to make it happen. I doubt that we'll get a proposal for development adjacent to one of our parks already, but in every, in every instance, it enhances park development to involve outside partners at every opportunity. And perhaps this park has been more successful than even Quarry Park at doing that. I would, my only counsel on this, I'm involved in property donations for the community foundation. And as crazy as it sounds, giving away real estate can sometimes be a real pain in the butt, but if people go into this well-intended, it does get done, but it's always a learning experience. It should, it sounds easy on the front end, but it can turn into an adventure. My suggestion on this is I'm much more in favor of whatever it takes to get as much land as we can get. The more land we get, the more, this is also an opportunity to actually create value in the part that we don't get, because there aren't very many developments that can go to market with being able to sell the attribute of being adjacent to park, which will never be developed, and also adjacent to river. And we want this, in both cases, we want the county, obviously, to be successful, but also the developer. And if the developer feels like he's getting a flat spot on his head, banging his head against a wall, dealing with us, well, I think in the long run that'll heal up. The, I, I'm, I'm excited about saying this going forward, let's get as much land as we can, it benefits both parties. It's just that it's so unique, we don't exactly know how to go forward, but let's figure it out. Obviously, we want as much land as we can get, I'm in favor of waiting until the second phase, if we're going to go this route. I think the money in the grand scope of things doesn't advance the cause as much as a property donation. And maybe after this, we can look at ways to orient the archery aspect of that, maybe away from this border or in a different direction. I suppose people are reluctant to shoot their arrows into the river, but maybe that's a possibility, too. Let's, let's go with this. I'd be interested in more land, certainly Phase Two, but even in addition, making the Phase Two commitment larger than what is already proposed. There's not a magic bullet here. This is pretty neat, it's just that it's complicated.
I guess from my personal opinion, I, I mean, the planning commission did approve, you know, the $1,000 per platted lot, and it sounds like, you know, the developer is willing in the future to do some kind of contribution. I, in my opinion, I think we need to go with the recommended action of the planning commission, and then come back on to Phase Two, whenever that is. And by then, hopefully, we've also looked at our end and said, okay, if that gets developed, do we need to change something? Because I, I think it sounds like you guys have both been at the table together, so, you know, I think there's hope for the future by allowing at least the initial part to happen the way it's presented. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I agree with most of what you said, but the planning commission had a totally different recommendation, and I have to admit, I'm unclear why that part went to the planning commission. Makes sense to me, the plating did, but I don't think we should have our commissions competing with each other about their recommendations. Park commissions make part-related recommendations. I actually, Ben's sitting here thinking, do we even need to be speaking to our council about any of this? So I, I don't disagree with most of what you're saying, but we do have two different recommendations, and I have to admit, I would probably, I, I would like to see people, them going back and continuing to talk about this, what commission, Lenzmar brought up in terms of a donation, actually probably makes ultimately the most sense.
Part, we have to make a decision, because if they want to...
And I'm okay with taking the Parks Commission recommendation.
We shouldn't hold them up either.
So my concern is, is we have two different recommendations, and I'm, again, really unclear why the planning commission is making a recommendation that relates to parks.
Because of the plat.
I, I got that, but I don't, but, but this relates to the park.
It's, it's the part, it's the ordinance that's all...
Right, it's the park ordinance.
Didn't get updated part of it, so, I mean, it needs to be updated in the operation.
I was going to say, clearly we need some kind of updated guidance.
Because it's parkland dedication fee, so it's either or, dollars or property.
It's just like, we don't want to have duly recommendations coming to the board, that gets a little messy.
I'm not big on the taking of the land versus...
Yep, I hear you. I'm not generally either.
Mr. Chair, but, but, again, I think I mentioned earlier in meeting that this is very common practice as our town has expanded. And as Commissioner Lenzmaier pointed out, you know, this is very unique to Stearns County in the location of this property, that three-quarters of an acre and that piece coming into Phase One. By all means, we can continue that negotiation into Phase Two, but the point being is that piece of Phase Two is a piece of raw land. If the developer sells it to another developer, then there's no negotiations.
But they still have to do, we still have the decision of a, per lot?
But the payment, but the payment in lieu has already been made on the first phase and negates the possibility of using the three-quarters of an acre. Okay? Because it will be in a new, a new owner will have the property.
You're still at almost four acres then, yeah.
Okay, but, that being said, okay, when we take a look at, when we take a look at the price of the property, if we were going to buy that property, he's selling the lots at...
I don't think we can look at that.
Well, that's, if we were to go ahead as a county and have to acquire that property and say we would like to buy another five acres, we're not going to get it at $4,000 an acre from, from the developers here.
That's okay.
Okay, so I, I would, I very much appreciate Lee's articulation of the value of that property and, and moving it forward, because again, we can take that three-quarters of acre and wait till Phase Two, and then at Phase Two, maybe they will have a different plan, but at least we will have that property at least to deal with and, and to be able to move forward with it. So with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to support the proposal as proposed by the park commission and by, by Ben. And also say, I think he did a very good job articulating not just one reason, but six reasons why it made sense to move forward with the proposal.
Okay, so, in the recommended action, decide whether it's the land dedication or fee. So just for clarification, approve the plat as recommended by planning commission. So did they recommend the fee or the land? Or that's not part of it?
The parkland dedication is a completely separate...
So that's the second part, we have to prove the...
Yes, yes.
Sorry. All right, Commissioner Marine?
Well, it just strikes me that all of a sudden now, the location of that archery range, now safety is an issue. County didn't own that land to begin with, and there's always was the possibility of there may be house out there. And why did that get allowed to even be located there? Never heard about safety before being an issue. Now here, all of a sudden, it's brought up to be an issue. And, and we're talking about taking 10% of these people's land? That's what Frederick Bossch had referred to as legalized plunder in his dissertations. And again, the planning commission denied this, or voted to deny it, whatever that stands for. Also, Brockway Township says, we do not support Stearns County trying to obtain land from the developers, part of the agreement, and Brockway Township is closest to the situation. So I think we need to respect Brockway Township's request there. To me, this is again, totally, totally out of line. It's, you know, it's one of the biggest threats to our republic is, is the, is the same as it's always been, and that is the growing power of big government. And this is a micro, micro value showing of that. It's just confiscating people's legal land? No.
So if I have it correct, Commissioner Persky, you had a motion in support of...
In support of the proposal, as Ben presented it, saying that we would take the, the parkland dedication amount, but wait as far as many, any concrete amount of how it's actually surveyed and put onto until Phase Two is resolved. Okay? So, so we'd have a payment in lieu of the, the amount requested, and then we would move on in Phase Two. And, and again, that would allow for negotiations to take place with the developer yet.
So you're proposing the $3,000?
No, the land, that we use, the land dedication versus a payment.
I would not be able to support confiscating people's property.
Stayed at that motion?
I stayed at that motion.
Was there a second?
I thought Lee's hand was up. I just, I've got a couple other questions.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm in favor of just the total land dedication, and what's crossing my mind is what's an appropriate instrument to tag the title on this so that we do get that land? That's the only thing I haven't thought of, because, well, there's a bunch of stuff I probably haven't thought of, but that's one thing that crosses my mind. I'm, I'm not ready to second this, this is a loose end yet, but on the other hand, Mr. Leggett gets frustrated by the speed of the process, so we probably ought to come up with some decision, even if it isn't crystal clear. And we might be buying ourselves into a he-said, she-said discussion later on and down the line, but tough, this is a unique opportunity, too.
Mr. Chair? So what is our, recognizing, and I totally understand you're wanting to get moving forward on this, so please bear with me just for a second, but I think Commissioner Lenzmaier, you've brought up another possibility that I'm not sure, it's, it's, it's hard to go, we can't really vote on any of that right now. I mean, so what I'm really wondering is, what is our deadline? Because I'm wondering if we should be tabling this until that's actually explored.
I think, Mr. Chair, I know that the developers want to see some sort of action on this because they want to move Phase One forward as quickly as possible, for, I believe they've stated, you know, well, financial reasons and other, others type things. So I guess it would be, I think, beneficial to the county to make a decision on the Phase One portion today for, for the developers.
My question, I'm sorry, my question though, Ben is...
Commissioner Persky, Commissioner Persky's motion would set the land, the land dedication in motion.
Including the possibility of a donation. Including the possibility of a donation? Because that's, that's what I'm hearing. I mean, that might be another option, but that's not one of the two things that's been really in front of us right now.
I'm gonna allow Mr. Leggett to come up, because if, I mean, if we're sitting here right now, it's, he's here, let's, if he might have an offer.
Thank you, maybe we can clarify. So yeah, again, our offer was again, what you're talking about right now, for the simplicity aspect of continuing on Phase One with the fee for 3,000. And we've told the Planning Commission, we've sat down with county again, part of our offer states that we would like to see for, again, for the, being able to move Phase Forward One, taking the fee and then, then being able to focus on the calculations. Again, I think with the county, and I think I've stated that earlier, our calculations show much less than what our offer is on the table right now. We are offering upwards of 4.4 acres. Again, there's some give and takes. If you guys, you know, if we want to get in, and again, we want to do the details and do the math, and all of a sudden, it comes out less than an acre. You know, again, our offer right now is for us to pay the fee on Phase One, and let's focus on our offer of doing a conservation easement on Phase Two, upwards of 4.4 acres. There's some gives and takes in that. But in order to facilitate Phase One, again, we're gonna recommend the fee. If all of a sudden, we gotta do calculations on this, and I think you guys are better off taking our 4.4 offer than running a risk of us getting the state involved and ending up with less than one acre. It seems very foolish.
Well, and you're addressing part of my question. Have you met with the Parks Commission? Because this is a Parks ordinance, so I would encourage you to do that.
Ben's been in the Plating Committee meeting. I've had three sidebar meetings, I believe.
Okay, I'm just wondering about the Parks, that's all.
Absolutely, we've had, that's been our number one talking point. Yeah, absolutely. And there's been some, on the, on the Plating Committee itself, at commissions.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm sorry, I just tried to make sure we're distinguishing. This is a Parks ordinance, so I think that some of the conversations have to be directly with them at this point, so.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Yeah, and again, that was, again, the frustration is that the county's solely falling back on this 10% in that calculation. Again, we strongly believe and based on, we've done a lot of research, that it will come in less than one acre. Again, it's what we generate, and it has to be a nexus of the fee of 20,000, has to be in proportionality to what the land value is. One acre of our land's over $20,000, you know, mid 20,000s. So again, I just wanna, we are willing to keep our offer on the table going into Phase Two, but part of our offer was that we keep the fee on Phase One, so, thank you.
So if the offer in Phase Two is four acres, let's say at 20 grand, that's an $80,000 contribution, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, and it's, it's a, again, we are looking at it as a conservation easement grant basically to the county. Again, there was some gives and takes with the stormwater attributes being able to fall within that area. And again, I think we listed in there that you maybe use the 3,000 too, because again, part of what we said is that the county can do whatever type of planting they want in their trees, bushes, and use our $3,000 fee from Phase One and put it towards some of whatever they want to do to that, that conservation easement that we would grant, so.
Okay, so at this point, we have a motion on the floor, looking for a second.
Mr. Chair, I know you're looking for a second, I'm still trying to decide, because honestly, this feels much mushier than we often are. I mean, this is a, honestly, we're gonna be doing a handshake and we're trusting you if we go with what you're suggesting, even though for me, this is really the first conversation we've had. And board meetings are not always the best places to be having these kinds of conversations. Commissioner Lenzmaier, I was Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lenzmaier, I'm wondering what you recommend at this point.
Well, a subsequent instrument to be drafted that where we have, at least have an option to go forward, if not writing this into a covenant on the development agreement itself. So we need some additional, well, the good news is, we've already started a record on this, just by the fact that the discussion has come to this board and will be in the board minutes when it's submitted to us for approval. But beyond that, require that it be one of the covenants of the development. In addition, if you want more, we can have an annual renewable option on the property for a minimal amount, like a dollar. Just build in multiple protections, so this goes forward the way we envision it now. Because as soon as this meeting's over, the murkiness can potentially begin. Again, I'm grateful for Mr. Leggett's patience on this. It's a new deal for us, so I appreciate the hesitancy of staff going forward. We might never see this type of proposal again, but here's what we are. This is gonna be a good deal, it enhances the park, it enhances his development.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmaier, I'm just trying to clarify, so are you suggesting that at this point, that we, that gets worked on for Phase Two? And that, is that what you're suggesting, or what's, what's your?
I think so, how's that? Because it says a new, a new deal. Just lock in something so that once we agree on this, it's there. And I just want us to see us get as much land as possible. Not interested in the dollar, because the, the instrument or the idea or the conveyance, however you want to look at it, enhances both the development and also the park. Will we ever have another instance of someone wanting to do a development adjacent to park again? It's unlikely. So let's do what we can to protect both sides. And maybe we leave that open, maybe we kick that either back to planning staff or the legal spokes here, but yeah, I want, I want whatever outcome optimizes the land donation.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I just want to say that if the present motion fails, then I would like to move the offer that has been presented by Mr. Leggett, which I think is pretty clear what his offer has been, in my mind.
Yeah, it was a written letter of intent to the county. Again, there was some gives and takes. Shelly went, but there were, oh, there, so, yeah, there was some things with some ordinance mods and stuff and working with the county, there's probably gonna be an ordinance modification coming up in the future that'll indirectly affect Phase One, but specifically Phase Two. And again, some of the stormwater attributes. Again, for simplicity, the way our offer, our letter of intent's written, we're asking for the fee on Phase One to not slow us up, as we all know, we've, and I've been, we've been talking about this for months and months. And again, we have no problem, and again, we feel our offer of 4.4 acres, we'd hate to see that dissolve or blow up in any fashion. It's on the table for you guys for Phase Two. If we have to go in and start doing the calculations, and again, you come back, and I understand you don't want to lose the, we're putting an offer on the table, 4.4, with some give and takes. If you guys want to force the hand on doing the calculations, it could come out a lot worse on the county's behalf. We would love to see this buffer. There's not a problem with the buffer, we just want it done properly. And please, focus on the fees for Phase One, that's what we would ask.
Mr. Chair, I was just, I understand some, some want action here, but we checked our timeframe, the board would not have to take action today. I haven't seen what the gives and takes are, or what ordinance changes are being suggested. I would be very uncomfortable if the board took action on this verbal until we get a chance to look at it and we have time, we could bring, bring something back at your next meeting, so you have clarity on really what that means.
So we'd put Mr. Leggett back about a month. July 19th would be our next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
That really puts them in a bind further, as far as, you know, the private sector, the private sector just gets.
Again, there's all bull cash flow, we're going into a recession, it's like, and again, we've been working on this for months. And again, we've been very specific with our offer, and our offer entails that we'd asked for the fee on Phase One, we've paid the fee already. You know, it's, everything's, we had Planning Commission vote in lieu of it, we've had the township in support of it, and we're willing to work with the county on Phase Two. And again, if you want me to sign the letter of intent on, I will gladly do so. But again, there are some give and takes, but I don't see, that's again, primarily a Phase Two thing. We are here today for Phase One. So if we can focus on Phase One, if we can get it put through, and again, with the fee, again, I know, you know, trying to sunset it and do the things over to Phase Two, again, that's why we thought it mucky to the water, and that's why we're asking for the fee on Phase One. So again, everybody can keep rolling, we can cooperatively work with the county on this park conservation easement grant, and I think it'll be good for all, but.
So it could also, Mr. Leggett, come down to if this is .78 acres on this first phase, it could come down by the time we got to the next one that maybe, like you said, we could come up short. So in essence, you might be able to say, well, I could agree to waive it and say, okay, I'll, I'll agree to the .78 acres, but then when it comes down to the next phase, you know, you could just say, oh, I just owe you the .78 acres and.
Yeah, and I sat down across the table from Chad May at the last sit-down meeting, which again, was roughly a week and a half ago or so. And again, it stipulated that we're okay sunsetting, but I told him emphatically, we don't agree with your calculation, right? So I said, you know, if you guys do decide to do that, and again, sunset it to Phase Two, which is what Chad May from legal, we had this all worked out, that if you guys do decide to take that route, it would just be a sunsetting of the potential land dedication, but the math would have to be done then with, you know, properly for what that amount would be. We are not agreeing that the .7 is accurate again. Again, we believe that when you do the math on the overall development, it would actually be less than one acre, as I stated earlier, so.
Commissioner Persky?
Mr. Chair, then I hesitate in taking the payment in lieu, because that makes it, it's a done deal and we move forward on promises and whatever works out later. Why, why can we not go ahead and just take the land dedication? We do not have to necessarily clarify what the amount is, but we'll take it and we'll work out those details later. And so now we've got the land dedication, the land dedication moves into Phase Two, and we go on from there. That way, everything stays with the recommendation from the Park Commission, as well as the way it was articulated. If it comes out less, so we get less, less land, but at least we will get land. We're not getting $3,000 and a promise.
But I don't want to go the other way either, where it's the developer, so he says, okay, I agree to that, and then now we come along, or I shouldn't say we, the county comes along and says, okay, we did this one time, so now we can do it.
Yeah.
You know, because we have precedent.
Yes. We don't, we don't need precedence, we have, we have the ordinance.
We do, but we've.
Yeah, the ordinance, and again, there's, again, we've done a lot of research on this, let's, let's just state it that way. And again, we're trying to do a cooperative effort with, with the county here on this whole thing. And our offer does stipulate that we wanted the fee on Phase One, and that our letter of intent for the granting of the 4.4 acres, yes, you may run into the risk of not getting 4.4, you guys want to do the math and it comes back at .7 acres, I just, we have a very good thing here for you guys, and I just don't know.
Commissioner Murray?
So really, we could make a decision just on Phase One today and worry about Phase Two later on.
Either way, whether you do the land grant or take the fee.
So we could do $3,000 for Phase One and say we're, talk about Phase Two in the future.
That's why I sat with Chad May, legal, and that was our discussion, that either way you guys go today, Phase One can get approved, and we can go, go with getting the plating process in motion, which we're 100% ready to do.
And Mr. Williams, would you be, you be okay with if we only dealt with the Phase One thing?
That's clear action, I, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I might not, I might not agree with it, but, but it's clear action and you could do that, yes.
I'm wondering if, I don't know if you, you might not be amenable to a change in the motion. I'm wondering if we did a motion today to move forward with the Phase One plating and the fees with the, with language that basically says that we are intending for there to be an agreement with regard to an easement or other land with, I mean, because I think it would be helpful to have the public record show that this is something that we're working on. I hear what you're saying about you're willing to sign a letter of intent, which is great, but that's not in front of us.
No, I understand.
Right? So I mean, could we potentially have that where we have, we're, we're saying, I mean, I'm hearing you say, we want to work this out. I am understanding the concern that if we agree to this now without any, any language, that it may never come to fruition and all we will have is that fee, which I'm with you, Commissioner Lenzmaier, I want to figure out how we can actually make the land work as best possible, which is not necessarily a quote-unquote like taking or anything else.
But one good option is, Mr. Leggett stated the acreage.
Right, but I would want that in the motion.
No, but it could, could it be stated that the minimum acreage they would be willing to contribute is that four point? In case the calculation comes out less, we're still getting four point something.
But there's the give and takes relative to that as well, remember.
Yeah, I guess we don't know.
But we could say, we could say to be negotiated.
Yeah, and we had, we've come, we've sat the table, in fact, I mean, the two meetings ago, this, this doesn't match exactly what came out of the meeting prior to. I drew up something specific to our offer, our offer has specific drawings, and there was a few different modifications to it. But, but again, yeah, we're, we're willing to stick with that. Again, we don't want to hold Phase One up, there's economic elements to the whole thing. And again, we laid it out very black and white with, with our letter of intent in our offer. I think it's extremely fair, and I think it's very beneficial to the county. So I think it would, I think it's wise that, you know, that we take the township's recommendation, Planning Commission recommendation, and, and again, be able to stick with that letter of intent, as Chad May and I, and again, not that you can't sunset the park dedication, as you said, it can come out worse for you, that's all I'm saying.
And Mr. Chair, we don't have any letter of intent in front, this is, again, you're asking our board to make a decision that feels, I'd like frankly, legal counsel, you're saying one thing, I don't want to get into he said, she said.
Okay, but then let's maybe go to we have a motion.
Well, actually, I want to move to table it until we get more clarity, unless we can get language in something that is gonna help us, because then we'd have the time to work it out.
Okay, well, so if, if that. We don't have a second to the first motion, so if you, if Commissioner Persky doesn't pull that, and you want to make a motion to table it in somebody's seconds, that we can see where it goes.
I just think we've got, I mean, we have far, I actually don't have a problem with moving on the plating, so long as we have some language that we feel is gonna get to where at least three of us are talking about in terms of land. I don't think we have that worked out today, and we're given two different options. I'd like you to be able to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I would be, I would be fine with that too. I would be fine with the table, because at least that'll let us work out the details about which way this is going to go, because also I heard the mention of a conservation easement, and conservation easement can be worked in different ways. So, which, which means it could be, the property owners could keep the property, which means they just can't put any development on that, but then it doesn't become part property, it's actually, still belongs to the property owners, and that, which would mean the county would not be getting any land, okay?
I'd be, I'd be willing to, again, if you want, again, for, for moving it forward, if you keep the fee, which we've already paid, and then putting some verbiage in there that when Phase Two is established, that we would, if you would return the $3,000 fee, and once we get calculations ironed out, because again, I've been asking for calculations for months, and I've yet to receive the ones that are based on generation of need. So that way, we pay, we move Phase One along, we can have verbiage added that we will allow for the 3,000 to be returned, and then the land dedication, once determined, could be amended to our Phase Two.
Okay, well, thanks, Mr. Leggett. We're gonna, we're gonna come down to it right now, so.
On the tabling thing, I'm against it, because financially, Mr. Leggett needs to be here.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table it, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
And Mr. Chair, just before we vote, I mean, it's not because I wouldn't like to move forward today, but we don't have enough clarity, we don't have something in front of us to do it. I would love to see him be able to move forward very quickly, I want to make, but this also is a big deal for us to figure this piece out.
Commissioner Murray?
Okay, financially, Mr. Leggett needs to begin, he doesn't have unlimited funds sit there like government entities have. And that's what I'm hearing here.
Mr. Chair, but, but Mr. Leggett can just see it and say, we'll go with the parkland dedication moving forward. He can, this, this parkland dedication has nothing to do necessarily with the four lots, those, that's property's gonna move forward as, as they are. We're only discussing the parkland dedication.
I hate to be a stickler.
Well, we have to approve the plat after this.
Again, I'm glad you guys take the parkland dedication, and that's what I agree upon with Chad May.
It's 3,000.
I prefer the fee for clarity and simplicity, but if you guys decide to take the parkland dedication, that's not a problem. He can do his calculation, it might be .78, that's, and he, and again, the verbiage was with Chad May, is it will be sunset to Phase Two. So when, when everything gets worked out on Phase Two, that's when the combination of the two lands would take place. There would be nothing taken on the forefront of Phase One. It would just be set up for that it to be amended.
Okay.
So I'm good with that, but just. So I'm good with that, but just... I sound my preference, but I'm telling you.
That's what I would prefer.
Then you want to take the table, you want to take that motion on?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, what?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so that's withdrawn. So we need a motion to, Ben, did you want to, or Shelley?
Okay, just for a clarity of process, we had originally accepted the fees as a part of the process. Those fees have been returned, so the $3,000 was returned. So this is a question of park dedication, land, fees. The intent is to take this, move it forward to the next plat if they choose to plat the remaining property. So this is a current four-lot plat. Make the decision, dedication of land or dollars.
So that's the first portion, and the next would be to approve the plat.
Correct.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion to either accept the fee or the land dedication.
I think that motion is still on the table.
Oh, okay.
So you're bringing that one back because we need a second.
Okay, I will second it. I want to...
Further discussion.
Right, I want to clarify.
So the motion is to take the land calcul, or the...
To be nego, to me, it's to be negotiated with. That's what I'm trying to figure out is, is it just we're not...
The land would be based off of the percentage.
Well, to be negotiate, we have two different viewpoints, it sounds like, on what that is.
We would invoke the land dedication at that second phase.
Right.
Right, which we don't know that calculation yet because we haven't seen the final, or the Phase Two plat to do those calculations on. And yeah, I don't, I can't stand here in front of you and say, it's going to be six acres, it's going to be two acres. It's going to be, because we haven't seen, because based off of the definition in our ordinance, you know, there's certain things that need to be subtracted out of that. So I can't give you, or yeah, Mr. Leggett is saying there's 4.4 acres.
So we're not doing a number, we're just invoking it with Phase Two.
Right.
And Mr. Chair, and it sounds like, Mr. Leggett, I mean, you're interested in this, but we don't know what this means. I mean, that's part of it. So I mean, I'd rather, personally, there was some flex. I mean, I hear what you were saying about calculation, calculation, and I'm hearing you talking about gives and takes. Those seem like things, right, those seem like just things to be figuring out and bringing something back for Phase Two.
Well, our offer can be totally gone and we just do this straight-up calculation. But if our offer was the way we're offering 4.4, you might end up with a half to three-quarters of acres.
Okay, so basically, we're invoking the land dedication versus the fee. So that's what your motion is?
Correct.
And then the fee will come into effect on Phase Two initiation, okay?
And I just want to clarify, Mr. Leggett, you are, you are okay with that motion?
Yeah, I spoke with Chad May. Again, we understood that he'd sunset the Phase Two. And we're fine with it. We're just saying it could affect our offer as well.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Do you guys need a break?
Yes, brief.
Well, let's finish up the plat.
Oh, yeah, we need to finish that. So I'll move that. I'll move the approval of the plat.
Okay, we have a motion to, that's the planning commission's recommendations. Prove the plat. So we have a motion to approve the plat as recommended by the planning commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Well, that was easy.
Okay, now we'll take a short break.
Okay.
And then we'll come back.
Perfect. That was confusing.
Yeah, you may want to pause that second thing, the vacation home rental discussion. I'm glad it might be 1:00 before we get out of here.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Next item is.
Good morning, Commissioners, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. So today, we're not looking for any particular board action. This is more of an update and an opportunity for the Commissioners to provide any particular direction to our Planning Commission that you might want them to consider in a couple of weeks. So back in May, you promulgated this process and a timeline for ordinance amendments. June 6th, we did our update to all the townships. We created a special vacation home rental update website. We created meetings on demand where emails would get sent out so people can really stay apprised to kind of where we're at with this. The Planning Commission will be taking the department recommendations at their July 21st meeting. And so before we presented it to the Planning Commission in a couple of weeks, we wanted you to have an opportunity to see it. So on packet page 176 is a list of various vacation home rental ideas, if you will, or performance standards, as we like to call them in the zoning world, or requirements. And then we came up with some options, right? Because that's typically what the board wants us to do. So we came up with options for different levels of regulation in each of those categories. I'm not going to go through any of those today unless you would like me to or have questions on any. I think in particular, if you see something in terms of a process or a requirement is missing, something that, oh, I really think that we should consider doing X, Y, or Z, that would be helpful for you to tell us that today.
Okay. So anybody have anything after the top? You know, I don't.
We don't have anything left in our brains.
Well, if we do come up with something, we should at least reach out to you before July 21st, correct?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I really appreciate the work that you put in this. And frankly, to our residents who have keep communicating about challenges and reinforcing how one place is one place, and that can be hard. One of the things is, I was looking at this is, I suppose if I was going to wave a wand, I'd put in elements from each of them. And again, just thinking in general about the burden on the owner about how they're communicating, what they're communicating, what's expected, is there access? So even if it was in a permitted situation versus a high, highly regulated situation, I would think we'd want that. We'd want some clarity really about that. And I know that part of that's how do we communicate? Are we communicating, you know, through, here's what you got to do before you put it in application? But I think we've heard a lot, and understandably so, what is the property owner communicating to the person who's renting? And how does somebody, if there's an issue, get a hold, you know, to make sure that that's been enforced? And certainly lots of places have that. I don't know about the rest of you, but I've been certainly getting contacts from maybe people who don't even live in our area, just saying, how about what so-and-so does in which this state? So I just, again, the picking and choosing about how do the neighbors have some opportunity and understanding that, yes, the owner has communicated these requirements.
And I like that you've highlighted the ones that the department recommends so we can take a little deeper dive.
Me too.
And look at those.
Yeah, I mean, we could go into a lot of dialogue on this, and I'm not going to get started. But, you know, we're putting it back into the Planning Commission, but they're not going to bring us back a silver bullet. And so it's going to ultimately come back to us. So, you know, it's going to be a tough decision because finding middle ground is going to irritate people on this one. So, yeah.
And Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I should have acknowledged that's part of what I did like was that there was things highlighted from different ones. So I think I'm not alone in thinking we get some things from different.
Anyone else otherwise, you know, just if you see anything or think of anything between now and then, I think we should reach out to staff?
Yes, and the public hearing is August 2nd.
August 2nd?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Angie. Next item is authorized signature Mississippi River Watership Project.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Becky Schlorf, Stearns County Environmental Services, Ag and Resources Division Supervisor. This agenda item is to authorize signature of the Mississippi River St. Cloud Watership Project Cycle 1 Phase 2 subcontract. And I will have Cole Lowen speak briefly on that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'll be brief. I know you have a tour coming up. So this is Cycle 2 Phase 2. This is part of the state's paradigm shift to watershed management framework. The RAPS process is one half of the circle, and one watershed, one plan is the other half of the circle. And then they repeat this every 10 years. We are in the second 10-year cycle for the Mississippi-St. Cloud. This work will be used to inform the one watershed, one plan that is just starting to be developed. Any questions, particular questions for me on this?
Any questions, otherwise we'd be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Clark. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Cole. All right. Next, we have Mark.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Last and not least, I have the last two items to present to the board this morning. It's Items H4 and H5 regarding two lots out in the Evergreen Mobile Home Park located in Avon. So beginning on packet page 193 with Item H4, the request to the board is to consider authorizing the board chair to sign an order either to repair or remove the home located on Lot 28 of the Evergreen Hills Mobile Home Park. Just a bit of background, back in December, environmental health staff noted that the home was vacated. It was abandoned basically by the prior occupant of the home. Since that time, well, in December, and then we went ahead and posted the home as inhabitable, as an hazardous structure. Then since that time, on June 3rd, we did have the Inspection Services of Central Minnesota do a 31-point HUD checklist inspection on the home, and they've developed a report based off that inspection. And that report has been provided to the board. Also, since the time we had posted the home, more recently on May 27th, the title of the home had transferred from the prior title holder to Cory and Abby Pitzer. They are now the new title holders of the home. And I do know the Pitzers do wish to rehab the home and occupy it as self-occupant. Mr. Pitzer is here this morning. He did come to hopefully address the board with his desires for the home. And if he wishes, he can speak. However, the report, the building inspector's report ultimately was to condemn the home. The value of the home sits at about $2,000, as per the appraiser. It is estimated that it's going to be well exceed the cost to rehab the home. I did present additional pictures in a packet at each of your chairs earlier this morning. Those are photos that were provided to me yesterday by Mr. Pitzer. Those show the condition of the interior of the home as it stands today. I did provide exterior photos of the home with the overall packet. With that, Mr. Chair, would you like to hear from Mr. Pitzer?
I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I think the pictures speak a thousand words on. Yeah, well, this is, we're doing separately.
Correct. There's two items. This is Item H4. This is for Lot 28. And the options for Lot 28 requested to the board is either sign a hazardous order issuing repair and rehab of the home within a certain amount of timeframe, or order the home be abandoned and demolished.
Because at this point, the inspection report says it's uninhabitable or should be condemned.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the building code, or the building inspector did put together the recommendation that the home be condemned.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So given what the building inspector has estimated, and I know you're telling us that there really isn't a recommendation, it's just we have two choices. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, the recommendation of the department and the county attorney's office is that the home be demolished and removed from the park.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. Any males have any comments? Anybody want to hear from Mr. Pitzer?
I think he came all the way down here, I guess.
Okay. Well, Cory, if you want to come up and just state your name and address, and we'll give you a couple of minutes here to.
My name is Cory Pitzer. I live, my current address is 151 Highview Drive in Albany. With the condition of the mobile home, we are aware that it does, the repairs are valued pretty high, and we are at the point where we would be willing to do everything to get it up to code and to fix it to make it livable before we move into it. And we would have it re-inspected by the building inspector after we are done with it to be able to do it. We are aware that the pipes need to be replaced, the floor, and we're actually taking advantage of this to be able to make it more suitable and easier because then we can have time to sit there and we can actually know what's more wrong with it as we're working on it. And if we do decide, as we're working on it, it does get to the point where it is going to be not worth it anymore, I will let Mark, I would let Mark know that we would go ahead and demolish it at that point. Because we want to be able to get in there because we were told not to do any repairs at the time, and we wanted to get in there and actually figure out exactly how much it would be to do it. And at that point, then, we would make that decision.
And how long a timeframe would that be?
I'd say within 60 days because of my work schedule, I can only usually have off on weekends. And my father-in-law is a contractor and a roofer. He knows a lot about the stuff. And my mother, she owns the mobile home park, so she knows a lot with mobile homes as well. And getting them both in there and so we can get in there and figure everything out and run an estimate through.
So is it appropriate if you grant, I mean, I don't know what the next step would be if 60, you know, what's, if you allow them 60 days, you know, I'm assuming either Cory would have to get ahold of you and say, we're just going to get rid of it? Or what's, what's the alternative?
Right. Mr. Chair, I think the board would have the option then to issue the, or, correct, issue the hazardous order ordering repair of the home. The way that order is written, there is a certain timeframe they would have to repair the home, which the board would need to decide on that timeframe as well to be entered into that order. Then at the end of that timeframe, the home will need to be re-inspected. If it doesn't meet the criteria of the inspection, then per the way the order is written, the home should be demolished at that time. So they may get halfway into fixing it, run out of time, have the inspection done and meet the inspection, and per the order, then would be ordered to be demolished. So I think that would be the choice of the board to either issue the repair order, hazardous repair order, or the abatement demolition order.
Any thoughts by the board members? Or in action they'd like to propose?
I guess I'm kind of like to give the private sector the benefit of the doubt. I have questions with the history of this particular mobile home park. I guess personally, I'd go along with the 60 days pretty much as a deadline, if that's an option. But I would also ask Mr. Pitzer if he's done any evaluation or comparison of what it's going to take to get this one up to code versus purchasing another one that's already up to code.
Yeah. You'd like to?
We haven't really done much research on that right now with inflation, with mobile home prices, and people are trying to charge $20,000, $30,000, plus then you have moving costs. We're taking advantage pretty much that it's already in the park to fix it up and make it livable at that point besides lieu of purchasing something else and then trying to beg the hassle, trying to find a mover to move it in and everything else.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I agree with Jeff. You know, by all means, I'm very supportive of affordable housing. But I'm concerned, looking at the pictures, you know, once you start taking up floors, start taking off the wallboards, you know, how much mold, how much rot is in there? And are you going to be investing more money than it's worth? And you should be, as Commissioner Mergan mentioned, maybe looking at an alternative other than getting that far into it. I would have some real concerns about that.
Yeah, that'd be my concern too, being you already own it. I would assume you've gone through it quite extensively already.
We haven't had a chance to. We were told not to do too much to it.
But as far as just looking to see if it's even worth it?
We've walked through it and looked, and my mother as well, she thinks it would be worth fixing up and because we can find a lot of the stuff on like Marketplace and at the restore to go at the cheaper value of fixing things, to recycle used stuff put in there.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
I mean, I certainly, I mean, I applaud you for wanting to try to do this. The pictures are pretty horrendous from a health and safety standpoint, but looking at this list, you know, under home was a disaster, will need to be completely redone. You know, my opinion is that, you know, the home should be condemned, open and loose wires. I mean, a lot of these things, I mean, it sounds like you probably have got some family members, if they're committed to helping you, could do it. And, you know, at first, when I looked at this, when they said the value is 2,000, in my head, it would be like, okay, well, if it was cost 2,500 or 3,000 to redo it, you might be talking about tens of twenties or thirties thousands dollars to do this. So I'm not sure if you're able, it's really none of our business about how you finance your things, your efforts. But if we went this way, I would say if it wasn't up to code and passed by the end of the 60 days, we should just be giving the order at that time because it's been like this for a long time.
How long has this home been vacant?
We identified it as vacant, non-occupied in December. The home has been without water, heat, or electricity for some time. And I believe the occupant of the home, I can't say for sure, but I believe the occupant of the home that was living there left for the fact that it wasn't heated. And so then, as the seasons changed, she sought other shelter.
Okay. Wondering what wishes the board?
Mark, could you, would you, is there any problem with giving Mr. Pitzer 60 days as an absolute deadline?
Well, I think that's what the repair order actually kind of does, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan. The repair order states, if we look at, let me direct you to the packet page for the repair order. On packet page 196, that would be the beginning, the language for the repair order. And as you read through that, on page 197, middle of the page, it says, it is therefore ordered, hereby ordered, number one, the landowners shall have X or blank days from receipt lawful services as order to attempt to repair the manufactured home located in Lot 28 of the Evergreen Hills Mobile Home Park. So the board could give a designated timeframe for Mr. Pitzer and his family to go in, evaluate it, and either fix it and get it done. Because then, as you read through this, it talks about you can occupy it, but then it also says at the end of that designated timeframe, the home needs to be inspected again by the building inspector. And then it says in number four, that if the manufactured home at issue is not approved for occupancy by the licensed building inspector following his inspection, that home shall be demolished and lawfully removed by landowners and title holders from the manufactured home park within 20 days of that inspector's report. So you could give Mr. Pitzer and his family the, a timeframe to fix it, to do that evaluation and complete those repairs. It would have to meet all the wrongs that were listed in that report, which is pretty much all 31 of the items. So he would need, they would need to get full blessing on that. And then if they did, he would be allowed to occupy the home and move in. If he didn't, per the order, the home would be ordered to be demolished after 20 days.
Mark, who is the building inspector? Somebody, it's a private?
Well, it's a private building inspection company. It's Inspection Services of Central Minnesota, Inc. It's David Barsodi.
Now, would it be, would someone be able to come along there, I don't know, once a week and check with what they're doing and saying, okay, you fixed this, but it really isn't up to code type thing to kind of guide him along the way versus coming all the way at the end and saying, oh, it doesn't pass because waterfall's on backwards or something?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, our office doesn't enforce the building code. I am not versed in building code. I know that if we were to ask Mr. Barsodi to do weekly checks, it's $200 an inspection.
Shelley, did you want to add some insight?
Mr. Chair, I just had a quick conversation with Cory. His statement is that he wants 60 days to make an evaluation of the property, not that he would have it all in compliance in 60 days. So I'm, that, I'm just making sure because that's what he just said. He wanted to make sure that they could do the work, and then it would be from that point forward. So this would be the evaluation stage that he's asking for, rather than the commitment to say they will get it done.
Yeah, then you're talking 60 plus another 60 plus another 20.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it sounded like you had already, you had already made the determination that you were wanting to fix it. It sounds like that's not what's happened, what you're saying. You want to make a determination about whether you can fix it.
We wanted to fix it, but we wanted to, we were told not to dig into anything, to figure anything out and like remove stuff. But then we were, because we wanted to wait until we got approval before we could do that. Because then we wanted to go in and we wanted to look at the wiring in the house, like where we're going to pull the carpets out, the walls off, and look, check everything out, make sure.
So that's part of what the inspection does, though. Maybe recently, you know, within the last couple of years, we had purchased a property, and it went in great detail about what they thought needed to be done or didn't need to be done, right down to electrical, about things that we needed, either the, you know, previous owner needed to do or we would need to do. And this looks like all your wiring would have to be entirely redone, and that's what the inspection's for. So you might, you might be trying to figure out, can you get the other pieces? But they're telling you already what's going to have to be done in all 31 of those areas. I mean, do you understand that? I mean, it's not, okay.
Okay. So the recommended action is to either sign the order for allowing 60 days or?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
To demolish the structure.
Right, Mr. Chair, the options are either, we're asking the board to either issue a repair order or a demolition order. The recommendation from Environmental Services and from our county attorney's office is a demolition order.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like what's in front of us, a suggestion, not to say we couldn't do it, isn't a, take 60 days and then decide. It's really either you're doing the repairs or, okay, thank you.
So can we get a motion one way or the other? So I'll make the motion then to authorize the chair of the board to sign, basically requiring the structure to be demolished.
I'll second that with some sadness, but I will second that.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just, yeah, I know that's a tough, I support your motion, just looking at how bad it is. You know, with electrical, I see fuses, I think about repairs. We have gas leaks, the wiring, the mold, the rotting, the water, you know, it's, I think it's a tough fix. I think the right thing is to make space for a new house out there, a different house on that lot, so, yeah, I support the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Cory.
The next item is Item H5, beginning on packet page 209. Very similar in nature of this is in regards to Lot 22 of the Evergreen Mobile Home Park. The photos that were provided pretty much show the status of that home. It's already being partly demolished, and it's been in that state for some time. Environmental Services did post the home back in January. On the 13th, the posting disappeared, so we reposted it in March again. Given the state of the home, we did not have the home inspected, obviously, but rather encouraged them to finish the demolition that had been started. It sat in that condition now for some time. The request to the board is to issue a demolition order for the part to finish demoing that home within the next 30 days.
I'll move to authorize the chair to sign the order for removal.
Thanks, Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mergan, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, do you have any further?
I have nothing else unless you have something for me. You want to send me back with anything, I can certainly look into any issues that you may want me to address.
Anybody have anything for Shelley? If not, thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.
Well, thank you for, that was a lot of, a lot of stuff.
All right. Last, we have issues by Commissioners. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, just want to remind anybody who might still be listening that we have Tri County Solid Waste Commission has the public open house at St. Cloud's Nutrient Energy and Water Recovery Facility this afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. And we've got a cool pilot going on, so it's definitely worth coming to see for people who can. And then the only other thing is just to make sure you all know, I will be gone unfortunately, very sadly, at the next meeting on other county business.
Okay, Commissioner Persky?
We've got 4th of July coming up. Everybody be safe, have fun.
Yes.
Stick around.
Okay. All right. And then I just want to comment, Randy, you know, the comments about safe and secure elections. By all means, we want to be out there and, you know, providing information for people, but there's, we're not going to convince everybody. I mean, there's still people that think aliens, you know, are occupying the world, and we're not going to be able to change their minds on that. So I want to say, you know, Dave has done a tremendous job in years past, and his job has been commendable. And I... And I think that, you know, we're going to continue to do that here in Stearns County. So the best we can do is answer their questions, and they've got to make up their own mind.
Yeah, and we've talked to those people that were in the audience today, and we're going to be meeting with them further, so.
Yeah, discouraging to have her say, well, that we don't trust the system, so therefore we're not going to vote. That's discouraging.
That's sad, right?
Because we want them to exercise their right in the democracy.
Yeah, and along with that, you know, a lot of times if you just visit your local precinct and even just watch, I mean, you kind of get a feel for how it works, especially the smaller township cities, stuff like that. Yeah, I mean, you really get a feel for, in my opinion, too, it's very secure, and this is people you know, I mean, it's your neighbors and stuff.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, we're always looking for election judges, so if they want to be part of the process, there are openings, so.
Okay. Commissioner Mergen?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
If someone disagrees with you on the process, put them on a committee. And so that's how I suggest you handle that, involve those folks as much as possible. You got to give them a front row seat and somehow stake in the game. And then finally, we had an issue in Linden Township of someone dumping garbage on one of the township roads, and the township refused to do anything about it. So I brought that up with Mark, lateral, and Mark pointed out that that was a township issue, it wasn't his job. Apparently, Jody Tyke thought it was part of her job, because she took care of the matter for us. The fact that the property owner is a local electrical contractor, does a ton of work for us, and actually has been a valuable asset to us, I guess wouldn't be a factor that comes into the equation, but I was disappointed by the lack of effort, Mark. I don't care.
Sure.
You can go ahead.
So, correct, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you pointed out there's a, there's a, correct, you pointed out there was an issue with dumping along Franklin Road next to this specific property. I did go out and view it. There is items in the township road right of way. I did reach out to the township and ask them if they were aware of it. They said yes. They said that that same day, the township had been to that same location with a vendor that they were going to be contracting with to pick it up. They had a plan in place to eliminate the garbage out of the road ditch. Sounded good. They also said that they have concerns with that area because it does experience a lot of dumping. It's a hidden section of road, perfect place to dump stuff, obviously. The township did say that they were looking at potentially putting up cameras to be able to monitor the traffic and catch license plates off of vehicles. So I do feel I did my due diligence in trying to help the situation. The township was addressing it. They did tell me they were addressing it. Normally, when items are left in their road ditches, they have an individual on staff that goes out and picks up those items. They transport them to one of the supervisor's homes, put it in a specific location. They have contracted with a solid waste vendor, then that comes to that location and picks that up from the township supervisor's home. In this case, given the size of the items, they were going to contract to do a direct pickup from the roadside. That's the information I was provided. So I don't feel that I shrugged my shoulders and said it's not my job. I did look into the issue. I did report back to Commissioner Lenzmeyer my findings, so I take exception to that.
I don't know if it's a highway engineer's job either.
I didn't say it was.
Well, and, you know, irregardless, I mean, I've been on township board, and these dumpings occur all over, and unfortunately, somebody has to pay for it and usually ends up being the township if you can't get anybody else to pick it up, so.
And we do support the township with score funding to help offset the cost of these disposals.
Well, there is, there is.
So just thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, there's issues that are not associated with typical process involved here, but I won't put you guys through it.
Lastly, make sure everybody signs up for a time slot at the Stearns County Fair. I know we can mention that at the July meeting, yeah, because it'll be after July meeting, but otherwise, we have a regional rail authority meeting after this, which we're late for already, so.
already, so. But...